... presentations from eight city departments. City Manager Brian Dawkey will give the introduction of the background purpose of the goals of tonight's work session. Brian?
Yes, thank you, members of the council. Tonight, you're getting base budget presentations and also tomorrow night. And you will have an opportunity to hear from each of the departments. If you remember, last year, we just had the major departments who presented to council. And the interest to council last year was it'd be, they'd really like the opportunity to hear from all the departments. So we set it up that way this year. So this year, in addition to the departments you heard from last year, we will be including the city manager's office, human resources, city clerk, legal services, and the municipal court. So we are excited to have all departments present. Tonight, we're focused on, and the way that we actually worded it on the posting for the agenda, we just kept it more open, not knowing exactly if we'll hit all eight departments tonight. So may have an opportunity to hit them all, depending on questions and how long tonight goes. But it really is about the council having a chance to interface with the departments and asking the questions. So tonight, you'll have city manager's office starting off, followed by finance, human resources, economic development, development services, and engineering. Now, those three, ec dev, development services, and engineering will all be up here at the same time because they'll be talking about some of the unity that they're trying in terms of process improvements and things. And we'll follow it by fire and parks and recreation. And then tomorrow night, we'll have the following groups present, and that would be the city clerk, legal services, information technology, police, municipal court, and then the Department of Public Works, which is really represented by three divisions, municipal services, sanitation, water and wastewater. Now, you'll note, and trying to keep this, we kept it very organized in terms of the outlines that the departments are presenting. So you'll see, and the departments will not be going through every line item in a lot of detail. That's not the intent. That's the reason that we gave you the presentations in advance. But you'll see the organization structure, budget, and positions by division. You will see a priority-based budget summary as far as some, each of the quadrants, some of the key programs and services within those, performance measure highlights. And the council's interest, as well as management's, is look at efficiencies as well, so the departments would be sharing those. And then if there were supplementals that were approved for the departments last year or this current budget year, we'll go through those as well. How have we achieved those objectives? Where are we at with those approved supplementals? And then the departments will finish with talking about their challenges and opportunities. Now, we will not be talking about their supplemental request for this upcoming budget year. Rather, those will be covered on April the 20th when we get into the revenue expenditure side of the budget. So you have every opportunity to see those then. So tonight, it will not be talking about the supplemental request for this coming budget year. And then we'll open it up for questions and answers. So that's a great opportunity at the end of each of the department's presentations to then, at that time, ask more questions. Now, in the interest of time, and it's certainly up to the mayor and the council, if you want to ask questions along the way, that's fine as well. Or if you want to keep them towards the end, but that would be up to the mayor and the council. So with that, that's kind of a background on how we're approaching this tonight. We're excited to have the departments in front of you. And our budget manager, Lori Wingen-Roth, will talk about some of the more details behind this, and then we'll have the departments up and presenting. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lori.
Hello?
Hello?
Let me stop you just a moment.
Okay.
Okay, council, how do you want to handle this? Do you want to be able to ask questions when you hear something? Do you want to wait until after the presentation?
I think sometimes questions in between are easier than waiting to answer.
Great, good, okay, got your answer.
All righty. I'm just going to go quickly over a little bit of background on the budget development process and some terms and just concepts for us to kind of talk about as we're going forward. First, I just wanted to talk about the pieces of the department's budgets are kind of a way to classify budgets. And that's basically between the, kind of the ongoing base budget, which is a term you'll hear us use a lot, the term "base budget." And that's how we pay for the day-to-day operations, the pencils, the papers, the fuel, those types of things. And that's the part of the budget that will go on year after year unless we make changes in what the department does. Then there's one-time things, which are kind of infrequent or unique. Some examples of those that we've heard recently are the census, it's once-in-five-year kind of expense for us, and that's the type of thing that would be treated as one-time. One-time items are tracked separately from the base budget. They are not repeated in a subsequent year. And all one-time items come to the council through the supplemental process to be approved for the coming year. Wanted to just talk a little bit about the process. Once we've adopted a budget, as you know, the departments begin developing these budgets in January, which is six months before the new year will actually begin that we're preparing the budget for. So we know the budget's an estimate. It's not going to be perfect. We do the best job we can coming up with those estimates. But as soon as the new budget year begins, we start with the monitoring process and the evaluating process and move forward from there. Not listed here is one of the things we do with one-time right at the beginning of the year, which is we basically look at the carryovers that were done and do any corrections in case funds had been spent in the prior year, and we reduce budgets if the department spent part of those funds in that year. Then we move into a quarter, a process where each quarter, we meet with the department to monitor their progress against their budget. We talk to them about any challenges that might be happening and how we might be able to address any of those unanticipated items. That's a meeting between the budget or the finance department and the department itself. Then we also do a review and work with the department as they prepare their requests for next year's ongoing base budget. This year, we did that in conjunction with the second quarter review. So we were looking at kind of the historical experience for the year and for prior years as we were looking at both the second quarter data and preparing their next year's request. That's done on a line item-by-line item basis within the individual units of the department. We look at things with the departments such as what are existing contracts? What are the requirements of those contracts? You know, what are the conditions? What conditions have changed? What are costs now? You know, things like, you know, this year, your electricity bill might be a little higher than it was last year, or it might be a little lower than it was last year. You never know exactly how those types of things will go. We also, at that point in time, as we're working with the department to develop its coming year's base budget, we look for items that they're having trouble being able to absorb. They can never prepare a base budget request for the next year that exceeds their current year base budget request. So in other words, their current year budget, less those one-time items, is the maximum budget that they could propose in this base budget process. So in that process, we may identify something like increased utility costs that they can no longer absorb. At that point, we work with them to identify what is that amount they can't absorb? What is truly an increase because of a rate increase? Or perhaps they've added a new facility and we underestimated the volume or the amount of electricity that would be required to run that new facility? And we identify and agree with them on an amount that should go forward in a supplemental request for you to consider to increase their budget for those purposes. And then kind of the last point in the process of developing the base budget for the coming year is that the actual cost of the people, the salaries and benefits, that's prepared by the finance department based on actual pay rates and actual benefit rates and forecasts for the coming year. Once we've completed that base budget process, we begin to work with the departments on their supplemental process. They prepare requests, and we can kind of classify those requests in like three major categories. One would be those base budget things I just mentioned, the case where maybe they just can't absorb the increased costs in their electricity or their utilities any longer. And they would, we would identify that those would be requested. Others might be one-time things, something like it's the year that we need to replace, you know, a certain piece of equipment, and maybe it's not part of an existing asset management plan, so it would come through the supplemental process and come to you with a recommendation whether or not to fund it. And then the next kind of group would be kind of new programs or new initiatives that may not be current programs or current positions that are out there. And again, this is a process where the finance department works and reviews what's been submitted. We, again, reanalyze department's ability to absorb, so we kind of take a second look. We have a couple more months of actuals. We take another look at, is it possible to absorb this item? We kind of look at the completeness of the cost estimates. You know, for example, we found some items this year where maybe the department had the same item in two different supplemental requests. So we were able to say, okay, wait a second. You have six of these here and two of these here. I thought you needed four and two. And so we made those kinds of, we identified those kinds of things to make sure we aren't duplicating or overestimating the costs of the items that are coming forward to be considered for supplementals. And then we also make sure the scope and the justification makes sense, that looks complete, and it's something that we can understand and move forward with. And then finally, once we've prepared that review, we prepared questions and an agenda for the departments. We sat down with the department with their deputy city manager to review the supplemental requests, to discuss those items, and to request any additional information that might, we felt was needed to be able to move forward. And then if there's no questions about the process itself, I have a kind of a quick overview of what the departments are going to go through.
Joe?
Just a, just a one quick question. At what point in the process, as you're looking at supplementals or the base budget, do you ask the departments through your lean training or the PBB, ask them where they have looked or processes they've looked at where they've created some internal funds, internal savings, looked to try to internally save money as a result of the data we're collecting, a result of the lean, before they move forward? At least a list of attempts, the things they've looked at instead of just asking for something new?
Mayor, council member, vice mayor, council members. We did a lot of that during the supplemental conversation. If they were asking for something, you know, we would say, how have, you know, what have you done to address this? Because we've gone through these reviews with them already of their base budget, we have a pretty good understanding of what's going on in their base budget. You know, so we would give them the opportunity, if this, is there something else? If we can't fund this, is there another way you're going to be able to do this from within your budget? And in some cases, some of them will need to do that. We probably won't be able to recommend all of the supplemental requests, and there's some things they may need to do.
Well, what I'm hoping is the department's proactive with you, you know, coming up with something they've attempted, either with the lean example we got the other day of parks, finding a way how they can manage some of the time to save a few dollars and coming to you. Well, if we do this process this way, we can take some of the funds that we're using for this program over here to save us money. I would hope they're the ones that are coming to you and making those type of suggestions.
We do discuss those when it comes to adding more funds to their budget. I think as the departments go through the, their efficiencies today and tomorrow, you'll see other examples of that and the kinds like you've seen with parks where it was not necessarily a budget savings, but an ability for them to do more with what they have so that they didn't have to make another budget request. So I think, hopefully, you'll see some more of those examples as we go through the individual department setting.
And that's all I'm looking for. You've got the lean program. We've got this new data we've got in here. I kind of envision all that as kind of just another tool to look at, to see if there's more efficient or more effective ways to create internal funding.
I just wanted to ask, you're not expecting though that on the, just let me know, on the presentations, that they use the discovery through the lean program or identify any of these programs with the particular statements they're making?
No, what I'm looking for is this is a routine process in which with the data that they have, they're looking for ways to create internal funds instead of asking for new funds. I'm looking at the big picture. I'm looking at the big picture.
That's all I wanted, thanks.
And mayor and council, and vice mayor and council members, that happens on a daily basis, perhaps on a daily basis, but a weekly basis or a monthly basis. Departments call us. We talk about the challenges they're having. We look for ways to absorb that. You know, the city manager's office had to deal with a large increase in the MAG membership this year. We sat down with them, looked for ways to do that. They may have chosen to do a little bit less of this or a little bit more of that, but we found a way to deal with those things and move forward.
Yeah, and that's all I'm asking for. It's part of that process. We went with this new tool with performance-based budgeting, and we've gone with the lean and asked our departments to look at different ways to be more efficient in their processes in the big picture because the big growth periods are not here anymore. So we've got to find ways not only growing our base. In my view, we've got to find ways of creating internal funds as well, so that's my two cents worth.
Thanks.
All righty. Okay, just a quick overview, and Brian covered some of this, so we'll skip through some of it. But basically, we're just going to kind of review the overall city budget, just to give you a perspective of what's involved here. And then I'll do a quick outline of the department presentation concepts. So this pie chart represents the citywide budget of 22, or $222 million. Today, we're talking about the piece of the pie up there. It's just under 50%. It's about 48% of the pie that's labeled operations and one-time budget initiatives. So that $106 million is essentially what the discussions or the presentations today will be about. We've talked about capital projects previously. Debt service is based on debt that's been approved, issued. It's a known amount. And then the other two pieces are the general fund contingency, or sometimes called a rainy day fund. And the last piece is the appropriation capacity we have should development take off and to deal with grants. So it gives us the capacity to deal with something unanticipated during the year as long as we have the resources available to do that. And this pie chart, just to, gives you a sense. We went ahead, it's kind of busy, but we thought we wanted to throw up every department whose budget you'll be seeing over the next two days. But again, to remind you, this is, this represents 106 million of the 222 million. So if you look at a department like legal services where they have 1.3% of this pie, it means they have about 0.7 or 0.6% of the citywide budget on a regular basis, just to give you kind of a concept of the significance of these budgets relative to the total. And again, Brian went over this schedule with you. This is just the schedule of who's planned for each day. And the only thing I would add to kind of the materials that Brian covered is if any of you have tried to take pencil and paper and add up the pie chart related to the priority-based budget pieces and compared it to the department's total budget, there will be differences, primarily because things like the one-time funding items are not considered cost of the ongoing program. So they are excluded in that PBB process. So just wanted you to know, if you had tried to add those up, you will see that they don't quite add up, and that's the primary reason why they do not. Otherwise, we can move forward if you're ready.
Any questions? All right, thank you very much. Kim?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to review with you the city manager's office fiscal year 15 budget. And certainly, as I go through things, if you have questions, please let me know, and I can address those. We'll start by just showing you what our organizational structure looks like. We do have 20 full-time authorized positions within the city manager's office, and I'll go through that in a little bit more detail on the next slide. Our total budget for fiscal year 15 is just about $2.9 million. That is about 3%, and you actually saw that on one of Lori's slides, about 3% of the city's overall operating budget. How that breaks down is we have four different divisions: administration, deputy city manager's office, the intergovernmental relations, which includes not only our legislative functions, but also things like grants, neighborhoods, and support for the mayor and council office. And then our communications, and that shows you on the slide, the breakdown of how those 20 positions shape out between those divisions. We did have a one-time supplemental this year that is shown in our total budget, and I'll talk about the status of that, but that was for Marvin Andrews Scholar that we have onboard for this year. And that's how the $2.8 million breaks down.
Joanne?
Kim, for yourself and actually for every department that comes up, if it's possible, I know you're showing us how many full-time employees are authorized, but it would be nice to know from how many are actually still open positions that maybe have been opened all year long. I'd like to know that if that's possible. I know one department in here did show us the open positions, but I think it would be helpful to know if there's open positions, okay?
Yes, absolutely. And just to go back, we are fully staffed at this time in the city manager's office. And going back just to those positions there, we do have our grants administrator position, which is on assignment to engineering. So while also managing the grants function right now is helping with the new director coming onboard and kind of getting things straight there. But we just filled the positions related to the mayor and council office support. You know, we've had some transition going on there and are fully staffed at this time. So taking that $2.8 million and showing you kind of through that different lens of priority-based budgeting, this is how that breaks down in terms of our different quartiles. And I know we spent some time last week talking about what PBB priority-based budgeting means, how that breaks down. Again, we have those four quartiles that we evaluate against many different sets of criteria that align to our city strategic plan, and then also different attributes that we've reviewed and discussed as far as, is there mandates associated? Is there a change in demand? How much of the community does it serve? And that's what kind of ends up in our resulting scores for our quartiles. So what you see here is we have about three quarters of our budget that is associated with quartile one and two programs, which was pretty consistent with the overall city perspective that we showed last week in the work session. What we've shown on here is some representation of different programs that fall into each of those quartiles. And again, as a reminder, the quartile one and twos are those that are most relevant to those key results that we are trying to achieve, so those strategic initiatives in our city action plan. And then quartiles three and four, while still important and in some cases necessary to actually do, they may not touch all of those different priorities in the same fashion as a quartile one and two, or maybe there's a factor in there that results in a lower quartile score. So in terms of some examples, we do have 99 programs in the city manager's office, so they are certainly not all represented here. But that is about 3% of the city's overall programs, which aligns pretty nicely with the overall city operating budget that we have. So just some example programs up here, and I won't read them all, but certainly if you have questions about quartiles or definitions, I can answer those. But in the quartile one and two, on the right-hand side of the screen, we have things like grants and our neighborhood services activity, communication, content development, this overall city budget development, our youth commission and citizen engagement activities. And then in terms of quartile three and four, we have things that may be mandates or required to actually facilitate some programs like public advertising or some ceremonial events that we do for groundbreakings and grand openings, and then also like some contract compliance and photography and video services.
Joanne?
On quartile three and four, first of all, could you elaborate a little bit about what constituent services are? And I was really surprised to see that graphic design services are in quartile three, yet like all of the items that they would be doing graphic design four is in quartile four. Or is that because graphic design services is really for the whole city, not just for the city managers?
Right, it does touch the entire city, and it gets more into some of the granular things that may be optional, that we're not required to do, versus some of the things that we are mandated to do on a larger scale. And so that's why you would see the difference in some of those. In terms of the constituent services, let me get our description here. That is defined differently than the neighborhood services, which is kind of that emerging issue and some of that day-to-day questions that come in. We do have the public stuff administration under there, so it is a little bit more granular than the actual neighborhood services program supporting HOA initiatives, bringing forward some of those emerging issues. So for example, like parks improvements, if you recall, through engagement with HOA last year, we identified a need for a shade structure in a park. Those are kind of the neighborhood services versus the constituent services, which is just answering, you know, question by question, kind of, I'll call it more of a one-off nature. And the reason that it is in the quartile three is we're actually seeing a decrease in demand for that service. And also because it is a one-off and kind of more individual situation, it may not be overall touching all of those different strategic priorities, but maybe more localized. So that's the difference.
So that's not obviously a single person's role? This is multiple people?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, I'm trying to tie, as we go through these, to kind of the quartiles and stuff, so I'm not like, I know you said send the questions. I just don't want to send a bunch of questions, so we can maybe answer some of them. When we went through this and the lean, and you looked through the programs in like quartile three and four, did you find any of those internal savings or duplicate savings that you can tell us about or streamlining that Joe was talking about?
What we are actually doing, because we are just initiating this process right now, and I'll use an example of one that we're going through right now, is when we do get those one-off questions, a lot of times, we'll hear from them from different points of entry. And so what we are doing to reduce some staff time that we spend on those, or maybe some duplicate effort that's going on, is actually going to be doing the process map, so kind of taking the lean and the tools and applying those so we can map out, okay, who is getting this information? Well, I get it because I heard it through the city manager's one-on-one because it came from a council member interaction in the community. But then maybe we find out it came in through the mayor and council office because they also sent an email. And so right now, what we're doing is we will actually begin to evaluate what that process is so we can create some efficiencies. So it's not, you know, I'm contacting a director about a question and then somebody else is doing that as well. So we're just starting that process. So I don't have statistics on, you know, how much time, but what we're actually doing right now is kind of getting that baseline of how much time does that actually take and where can we reduce some duplicate effort.
Yeah, because I think that would be interesting if we could get that back as everyone, all the, all departments are going through that, that we can figure out where that duplication is and how much is being saved. Because I think the citizens would really like to know that, that we're not just mapping stuff for no reason whatsoever, that there is some specific savings, and where is that savings, and how much we're saving by doing that. I think that's really important because, I mean, we have a whole list of programs here, so just so I'm right, make sure I'm right, you haven't really gone through these programs yet. That's the process you're doing right now, is to go through a lot of these threes and fours and see where we're at.
Correct. And then also, based on the discussion and the policy direction that's coming in from our work session last week, and what are some of those areas? So for example, we talked about programs in those quartiles that don't have a sense of community score, or those that may be mandated. That's where we are going to then prioritize within those quartile three and four programs of where do we want to focus our efforts and apply the lean tools and things like that. So it's kind of the stepping off point for that.
Joanne?
Kim, for, I assume everyone used the same formula for these slides, because the slide is the same for everybody?
Correct.
Were these programs that were, that are being shown in this particular slide for everybody, were they filtered in any way?
I don't believe so. No, they were not filtered.
So I think what might be very helpful is, as you indicated, there's 99 programs in the city manager's office. I think having a summary overall, an unfiltered summary, how many are quartile one, how many are quartile two, how many are three, how many are four? Because this, if I remember this correctly, this gigantic list that we got last week is filtered by what's mandated, and there was another similar item to that. So this is a, this document is a filtered list.
Correct.
Correct?
And so just in terms of follow-up, so what you would propose receiving is kind of a breakdown by department, the number of programs that fall within each quartile. Is that correct?
Total number of programs, and then how many are ones, how many are twos?
Okay.
Because you're showing a dollar amount, and we're showing all this, but we have no idea what that really represents.
Because you can't correlate it to the other list.
Yeah, does 219 represent six programs, or does it represent, you know, 66? So, thank you.
So in terms of highlighting some key performance measures, and again, I won't walk through each of them in the interest of time, but you'll see here, we've highlighted some out of our city stat program that relate to the city manager's office. A few of them up there relate to kind of our sense of community, and that's really where we have that citizen engagement piece, and that's the social media website and the public stuff app that we launched this year. You'll see, and in regards to that, on the bottom where it says NPT, which means not previously tracked, that's a new application for us this year. And so between that and then That's a new application for us this year, and so between that and then also the website hits to the homepage. That fiscal year 15, because we are using an entirely new web platform, the fiscal year 15 is going to serve as kind of a baseline, so we can make sure that we are actually establishing with these new systems, what type of interaction are we seeing, and then set some targets based on that interaction, and what type of engagement we're seeing from the citizens there. We also have the number of legislative bills followed, and you could again see where that fluctuates. We have to kind of estimate in terms of how much we think that's going to creep into the city municipal arena each year, and so you'll see that kind of go up and down per year. And then, again, kind of going back to the discussion that we had last week at the work session about the performance management program, we have a measure where we are paying focused attention on making sure that we have city stat measures that correlate to those Quartile 1 and 2 programs that are most relevant to our results. And so, do we have measures, and where we don't have measures, we are filling those gaps. And so, that's an effort that we've been working on citywide, managed by the city manager's office. And so, you'll see, last fiscal year, we had 40%, and then this year, we have a target of 75%, until we get that fully correlated through our program.
Carolyn?
This is a really basic question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. What's the difference between a goal and a target?
Sure, that's a great question, and what we do as we prepare the budget each year, we estimate what we want our target to be. So, for example, I'll use social media followers. That's where we think we can get to based on our plan for engagement of citizens. What we do then is we take, so for example, in fiscal year 14, we thought we would have about 1,500 followers, and then we monitor that each quarter through our efforts, kind of publicizing it, and see, are we hitting that, or are we not? And so, you'll see, for fiscal year 14, we actually were almost right on target with that. And then we evaluate for the next fiscal year, and this is part of what we'll be doing for the budget process, of what is that target we want to set for next year? And you'll see, in fiscal year 15, we were pretty aggressive in terms of, you know, how much we thought we could increase capacity, but with a new person focused on our social media efforts, that we thought that was a realistic goal. So, we set that at the beginning of each fiscal year as kind of a target of where we would like to see our performance, and then monitor it, and then report out quarterly through our city stat program.
And when does it become a goal?
It becomes a goal at the time of our, yeah, of our budget process. So, as we develop our proposed budgets, we will then set new goals for fiscal year 16. We'll be going through that right now, and you'll see those in the budget book.
And I noticed in this, I noticed that this was pretty consistent through all of the reports we got, is that there was very often, in, let's say, in this case, the goal was 400,000, the result was 491,000, and the target then for 15 was 475. That very often, the target for 15 was significantly less than what was reached in 14, and I was just curious as to what rationale then we're using for targets.
Yeah, it's a good question, and so there's a couple of different factors that come into that, and I think just kind of in general. One is, we are preparing the next fiscal year's target before we've actually finished the cycle, so we kind of project out based on our activity. And the other is, we may have a factor that has influenced, and the website, I'll take that as an example, because that was changed completely from our previous platform, and we didn't really have a foundation for what would be realistic, then we just kind of take the past information and use that as a baseline, and then when we actually finish out this fiscal year, we'll be able to see, okay, was 475 realistic? Were we significantly under that because of the way we changed how we measure it? Or maybe we really underestimated what we could do, and it comes in significantly higher. And so, as part of our new budget process, we'll look at our quarterly trends, how are those numbers coming in, and then set a goal that's recalibrated for next year.
So, these may not be what we end up with?
The target may not be where we actually end up in terms of actual, right?
But that will be the target moving forward?
We will have new, yeah.
This fiscal year.
These were the targets for this year. So, as, when you see schedules come forward as part of your budget discussions, you will see updated fiscal year 16 targets.
So, they're going to update it?
We will update those, that's just for this year.
I just noticed that, that that was very consistent through this whole process, and some of it looked like it was just a concern to me.
Yeah, and there may be different variables, but yes, understood.
I'm going to challenge you on your social media followers. They should be more. But I'm going to ask you, is this strict, since this is in the city manager's office, I'm assuming that does not mean Ballpark, that does not mean police, that does not mean fire. You're speaking of Facebook, you're speaking of Twitter? What are we speaking of for, since this is just city manager's office?
Yeah, good, good question. It is all of our social media platforms, so the Instagram, Twitter, Facebook, and it is for the main city pages only. So, for example, Ballpark has their own specific account that is measured separate from what you see here. This is just main city accounts.
I'm watching your marketing documents, going through all this, and I just wonder that they're too low sometimes. Okay.
Kim, so, 491,000 hits to the webpage. Other than a number, what does that tell you?
That tells us whether or not, as we promote our city webpage, whether or not people are coming and reviewing information. So, for example, in the in-focus, we may put the website address on there, and there's additional information about events, things like that. So, are people coming to the website to get information? One of the things with our new platform for this website is we have a different coding mechanism, and so one of the changes that you'll see for next year is, right now, we're looking at the homepage only. And so, how many people are coming to goodyearaz.gov? Well, with the new Vision platform for our website, we have the ability to direct people to specific pages. And so, as we look at that, that will give us even better data as far as how many people are coming, but what are they looking at? What are they clicking on? And to your point, and that's, I think, one of the benefits of transitioning to this new website, because other than telling us how many people went there, we didn't know what they were looking at, or if they were clicking through and registering things. And so, this new platform will allow us to see which pages they're visiting, things like that.
So, is this a new platform that's different than the new platform we did about 18 months ago?
This is the Vision, the Vision, the same platform that we, when we transitioned to the new website on July 1st, that's the same.
So, this is an upgrade, it's a continuation, a part 2?
This is, so what you see in fiscal year 15, because it was a new website for this fiscal year, we didn't really know what the measurement would be in terms of website hits, or the geo-coding capabilities. And so, now through working with Vision, we have identified the ability to actually delve a little bit deeper, and knowing that we can direct people to specific pages. So, that's where, this was a target kind of based on that, that new variable that I mentioned, where we didn't know what it could provide to us. So, I would say it's kind of an evolution of what we thought we could track with Vision.
It seems that, not just these, but again, this is going to be generic throughout, you know, all the presentations, that some of this information, we have no control over. We have no control over the number of legislative bills that we follow every session. So, that really doesn't, it's not really measuring our performance, it's just measuring, well, I guess technically it is. But if we're, if we're trying to drive towards something, or drive toward an improvement, and I'm going to keep using the example of the fire response, it doesn't matter if we get there fast, if we don't know what we're doing when we arrive. So, using that mentality across many of the performance measures, what is the data actually telling us? And I'm, based on what we've seen, you know, the preview from all the presentations is, I don't know that we're getting a lot of that. We're getting a lot of counting of widgets, which is something that we used to do. And I was under the impression that this city stat and all the performance measures was going to be more useful information, so is there any way to elaborate on that?
Yes, and it's a good observation, and it's something, as we work our way through not only the performance management program, but that, that measure that you see up there of linking our programs to our measures, is a gap that's been identified. We have in our city stat program, measures that are, you know, data, kind of the counting, some workload indicators that we use, like how many, how much demand for, for a particular service is there, and then what we call kind of the strategic and the outcome focus, which I think is, is what you're focused on. And as we go through, and we're linking up our programs, especially in those quartiles 1 and 2, and looking at, do we have a measure that really tells us whether we're getting the result that we want? That's the gap that we're seeing. So, as we link these, that's the next conversation of what are the measures that we need to build in there, so it does tell the story of, it's not just, you know, the number of bills, but how much of a percentage did it have on an influence of the city's budget the next year, something like that, so we can tell a story with it, rather than just this is how many we did.
Joe?
No, I can't add to that.
In terms of efficiencies, what we have presented here on our slide is some of the stuff that we're doing on a citywide basis, and then also some things specific to our office. And I'll just jump to the, to the bottom one first, because we've been talking about that a little bit now, in terms of, we've completed the first full-year report out of both priority-based budgeting and city stat. How can we then evolve that to make the linkages better, and also the data more meaningful? So, we've been having kind of that discussion. And as part of that process, creating some efficiencies in terms of how do we actually collect the data, how do we analyze it through training for our PBB and our city stat teams, but also changing the forms, so it's easier, there's less duplicate information, so streamlining that process in and of itself. And kind of just working backwards up to that, one of the other efficiencies, we implemented a new communications work order system in the communications division this year. And as I mentioned earlier, talking about the programs, that division supports the entire city, and we have an extreme focus on making sure that we are getting the right information out, in the right mechanism, in a timely fashion. And so, what that has allowed, has been kind of this bringing all these requests that come in from all the different departments, and for more effective prioritization, and then also kind of some of that workload measure, is the demand for those services increasing or decreasing, and how do we manage that? And then lastly, I wanted to touch on the lean, and we talked about this last week, and we're deploying that to all employees this year, the introductory four-hour course. And I think to the discussion that you're having earlier, when Lori was up here, of how are we creating some internal capacity to handle cost increases before we just come and ask for additional dollars? And even to Councilmember Loretano's point earlier of, how can we quantify and say, what is it we've actually saved? We have, we just got some information today that kind of resonated with me in terms of the lean process and how it can impact your, your processes, and how you actually conduct your work, and that when you define your current measures, so kind of how long do certain things take, and how many do we do, and how can we streamline that, about 95% of that actually results in those soft dollar savings. And just to kind of hit on a point that we got last week in the work session, that's where you see some savings of somebody's time, and so how do we then reapply that to create some of that internal capacity, so we are not just automatically asking for additional positions and things like that? So, that's what we are working on citywide, to make sure all departments, all divisions have the ability to understand that, and also the tools to actually go through and identify those and tell that story. So, that's something we're working on this year. Did you?
Joe?
This is a follow-up from the discussion we had last Monday, and again, on your lean process, I think there's value in when you're bringing in more than just the direct individuals working on it. For example, when we were talking about the parks, and the timing of the trimming and the raking, and I raised the question, do we ever look at the actual count of shrubs, or whether there were water-resistant shrubs, or is it the type of shrubs that may grow slower, so we don't need as many people cutting, especially on the, and then you bring in the water people, then you bring in some of the other issues. So, when you're doing the lean, and when you're doing the process improvement, the process look, sometimes if you can get more of the stakeholders involved in looking at it, maybe you'll come up with just a whole different approach that may get you what you're looking at, but not necessarily what you started out looking at. Does that make sense?
It absolutely does, and I think what it can also do is identify where we are imposing on our own selves, certain standards that maybe we established a long time ago that warrants some additional conversation, and that's where the council policy direction comes in. And I'm thinking about the discussion last week, and the conversation about, wow, that's a lot of shrubs, and if we're following design guidelines, and that's what we've set up, maybe that's an opportunity to have a conversation about, do we need to reevaluate that? So, that's the value of what that conversation will give you.
Mayor, if I may just add to that, as far as the lean training, that really has just started. So, put it in context, we will have all of our employees, except for fire and police, they'll be, have gone through training, at least at an introductory level by the end of June. That's very aggressive. Right now, we're training several individuals this week, so they can go back out, kind of train the trainer-type thing, and that's going on right now. But I just want to drive on that point. We have every expectation it will be improving efficiencies. You know, if you think about lean, about half of all the Fortune 500 companies have gone through it, is not a tool that is used much by local government. And, and we are seeing that as a trend to start to demonstrate performance efficiency, stuff like that. One of the things that we're looking at lean, and I made a couple of notes here, and I think it's real relevant to what, what council's talking about, is through lean, it does improve operations where we become faster, better, and more responsive, defining, measuring, modifying processes. The other is, is it will eliminate non-valued tasks, non-value-added tasks, and maximizing process speed and reducing complexities. So, there, we see a lot of benefits. This is, and there was a, I think a recent example of Salina, Kansas, started this in 2011, just now really recognizing and quantifying the amounts of dollars that they're saving as a local government. We're just now starting to see some, and, you know, as evidenced last week, we talked about a few, but it really is one that is going to be sustained. This management team is very much behind this, and employees are going to be very involved in this as well. And more excited as far as down the road, as we get this implemented, as far as the additional cost savings and efficiencies that will come out of it. So, still early in some respects, but we're, we're getting very aggressive as far as getting the training throughout the organization.
Thank you.
One last point on that, and I think this really gets at the heart of, how are we performing? That lean is very much focused on understanding what your customers want and creating value. And so, when we say we're striving for a sense of community and quality of life and sound fiscal management, lean, the lean philosophy has that as the end goal, and it's all about creating value in those areas. So, to Brian's point, I think that's, that's kind of the exciting part with that. In terms of our supplementals this year, we did have three that were approved. I mentioned the Marvin Andrews Scholar Internship, that was one-time funding this year, so that is not part of our base budget, but we have Jake Meshke, who has been on board with us since August. He is set to complete here in May, coming up, but he has been doing rotations, started out in economic development, spent some time in the city manager's office, and now is working with the budget team, but has really provided some excellent support in terms of some key projects for us, not only in economic development, and some of the recruitment activities, and some research and data to show data trends in terms of housing and growth, but also some key feasibility studies and coordinating that to develop some strategies, and that crossed both economic development and the city manager's office. I mentioned we have our digital communications administrator, that was a new position that was approved in the communications division this year. We filled that position, and it's been filled since July, and that position does manage all of our websites, the internal e-site, our new mobile application, and our social media. And I would also just add that we are tapping into his 15 years of expertise in terms of lean deployment in the private sector, and he has really catapulted our efforts in that area, in addition to supporting our digital strategy. And then the in-focus, we see typically about 7% to 10% increase in distribution each year, and then also manage some of those commodity costs that typically go up in terms of printing and distribution. So, that leads into some of our, oh, go ahead.
You can finish, I was just going to say a question about in-focus.
Okay, yeah, and that actually leads into the next slide, as far as some challenges and opportunities, and even some efficiencies that we're looking at. So, as I mentioned, we continue to look at, how do we manage? So as I mentioned, we continue to look at how do we manage that increased demand for that? And we are looking at some alternative methods of, of delivery in terms of making sure that we can manage those costs. But that is something that continues to be one of those pressures on that specific program as Lori was mentioning earlier, kind of our base cost for that. Additional challenges and opportunities, as I mentioned, the lean implementation, that's a high priority for us right now. And one opportunity that we have is to do that train-the-trainer strategy as Brian mentioned and build that capacity to release some reliance on, on city manager's office to support that. And then also making sure that we are staying on top of the use of technology to engage and inform our public. We talked about those different strategies and it's all about the right mechanism at the right time. And then making sure that we are capitalizing on the development opportunities that come our way. We're seeing a lot of interest and we're focusing our capital improvement plans on where are those areas of interest? And so how do we make sure that we are staying on top of that so we are poised for success when those opportunities come our way?
I just had a question and I know I asked this a while back and I doubt it's changed, but on the in-focus, and it may depend on how the list is purchased, I know it's going to every resident within the city. And of course postage keeps getting more expensive every year, the printing, all of that. Is there a way though to be able to offer to our citizens? And this is why it may not happen because it's just directly going to every address in, in the book. But if you were to give the citizens an opt-out and, and they're allowed to say they want to take it on the web, read it on the website rather, I mean, because I know we're hitting it digitally and I know we're hitting it, you know, by mail, but maybe it's not an option, but it's, I would think that that would cut down some costs if you were to find out that there were, you know, 10,000 of the, I don't know.
If someone come to the table, can you answer that?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Shereen Zaya, Communications Manager. And to your question, Councilmember, currently the way the in-focus is mailed, it's bulk mailed. And so it goes to every single address within the Goodyear zip codes. If we were to give that option, it would be, it would have to go first class, direct mail, which would be a lot more expensive on the postage side.
Which, yes, obviously you wouldn't want to do that. I understand. That's why I asked, it may not be an option here.
It is an option, but it would be, there would be a cost associated with managing that program because then you've got to manage a distribution list, who's electronic, who's hard copy? And then from that, it would have to be a direct mail piece, which a first-class mail is a lot more expensive than bulk mail.
I know that. I just was gonna ask the question. Thank you.
Go ahead, hold it. I'm going from a little different angle, but on the in-focus. My understanding is a lot of our citizens get a lot of their information from our in-focus. Is that, is that accurate? But besides the other social things that we have.
According to the most current citizen satisfaction survey, yes.
Okay. And I'm just throwing this out for the rest of the council, and I know it's more expensive, but because of the current environment of how information gets out, and I know we have social and I know we have Twitter and we have all of that, is as you go through performance-based budgeting and through lean, if you find some additional things that you can't use, what's, what's the cost associated with going from eight to 12 issues a year to get the information out to our citizens? And the only reason why I mention that is if that is a greater source of information than some of the other publications, then to me, it's an excellent opportunity to reach in addition to the other. That's just my own perspective, so I'm just throwing that out.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I'm, I'm not familiar with the history of the frequency.
We might have.
I know that it's gone through some transformations.
I remember.
The only reason why I ask that is the environment is changing of how information about the city is getting out and what, you know, and I'm thinking if the last citizen survey said a lot of people get their information from that magazine as far as what's going on and the events and information, then to me, you know, and if, if it's all about building community and getting information out, I just throw that out. Maybe that's something to take a look at. I don't know what the cost associated with it, but just something to take a look at.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo, I just, yeah, I just want to let you know that we have looked into that and we are currently in the process of evaluating the possibility and the costs associated with going to a monthly publication.
This wasn't my original question, but I'll ask it since we're on the in-focus and not to micromanage here, but do we look at, like when we're going through the lean, do we look at different paper stocks, different paper qualities? Because, because it's beautiful how it's done, but have we looked at any other way to cut those costs and still get the information out there?
Sure, very good point, Councilmember Loretano. When we went through the printing contract late last year, that, that was one of the options. And for the quality of the publication to maintain as far as color saturation, it's very much a science. And so since it is a four-color publication, the ink would bleed through if we went with a lighter paper stock. So the paper stock that we're currently using is basically the, the lightest paper weight that you want to use in a four-color magazine. If you went any thinner, then the colors would bleed through. Sometimes you see those really thin newspaper type and it's harder to read. And so that, that's where we ended up with the paper stock we're using currently.
Well, that wasn't my original question, but I just throw that out there since we're talking about different options for that. But it was more for, for Kim. What I really want to see, and I, I said was, I want to see those, those measurables and so we can really say, hey, this is where we're saving money and we can really point to certain programs we've saved, we've consolidated or we, we've, we've used lean. And so we can really point to that. I think that's really important. I also think it's important, and I brought up last time when we're talking about grants, if we have a program that's supplemented by a grant, it may cost so much, but we are not paying that. I think it's important that we say, this is how much. And then that brings me to the Marvin Andrews Scholarship Program. I think it's really important that when we, we discuss that, rather than we paid 21,000, I think we need to know what benefit, how much did the city get for that labor as well? Because I think there's an offset there that I think we need to make sure that we let people know that having an employee, kind of like a free employee, how much we made for that. So when we go through things like with grants and stuff, I'd like to know how much the grant was and how much the offset was. And I think it really balances out when we're looking at it.
We never stop saying what's in it for me. So that's what the citizen says, what's in it for me, what's the cost for it? Yeah. Molly?
I have a question for Kim. Kim, for your 99 programs that are in the city manager's office, have they all been identified that they will continue through the next budget year? This is what you're going to propose with your presentation.
Right. This is the model that we just got back for fiscal year 15. We will evaluate those and look at, are there any things that we can eliminate? To this point, we have not identified anything to eliminate. So they will be the foundation for fiscal year 16's PBB model. What I would say is as we go through this and we call this lap two, and as we continue to evolve in that, we will look at, do we, do we really need to break it down to 99? Or maybe we need to consolidate some because they are dependent on each other? If you remember, we had that conversation last week of you can't do one program without another. And so I would say rather than eliminating, we will look at where is there a natural consolidation of some of the detailed level that we have now? So you may see a change from 99 to a different number as we improve that process.
But there won't be an elimination. So the, the thousand programs that we have printed out here and the different quartiles, are we to assume that all of that is going forward in the next budget? Every single one that's in there? Somebody?
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Who has an answer?
We'll have Deputy City Manager Reed address that in just a moment.
I'm sorry, Wendy. Did you hear what I asked? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Maybe, am I in the weeds?
No.
No, I think it's a question.
No.
No? Okay, I don't want to be in the weeds, but what I would like to know, and I, I may not, I may need to frame it differently. City manager's office says there's 99 programs. As we go through this budget process, is the 99 number gonna be it? Or will some be taken away? She said they probably will be consolidated, but what I really want to know is in the printout of the thousand programs, are we to assume all thousand of those programs are going to be going forward in the 15, 16 budget? None of those are going to be cut out?
We have identified a few so far. As we, last week, we were talking about an initial review. We had just gotten the report back in February and then we got the final report with the revenues back from Center for Priority-Based Budgeting, I think it was about March 19th or 20th, so right before we presented to you. But we had the larger departments go through their programs and look at their quartile threes and fours to identify some reductions. That's where we had the 50,900. It's not a big number, but we started that process already. Obviously with getting the report back currently, we're going to continue to go through this process as we move forward. I know the police department eliminated four positions and HR is looking at the tuition reimbursement fund because we're just not trending at the numbers that we should be trending in that. So we're asking ourselves the question, should we keep that amount of money in there? We could use that money somewhere else. And while they eliminate those programs, say in the police department, the four programs, there are, because you allocate the personnel, some of those programs had maybe a .02 person assigned to it because it's not their entire job. But it's important for us to reduce those and reallocate those resources to higher priorities in the, in the list so that we're not just, you know, so we really initially started with the threes and fours. And that was Public Works for Police and Fire have done their review. The rest of the departments still need to do their reviews. But it is definitely something that we want to really delve into some of the details because I know when the police was going through, they were going through their information. It, it, there is a lot of good conversations happening as to why, why is this still here? And can we move this, you know, two-tenths or half a position up somewhere else to support the higher priorities? So it's, it's, it's an ongoing process.
So we could see some of the numbers change as we go through this budget process?
You mean the programs, not positions?
Programs, yeah.
I'm not talking positions.
No. You could see.
Yeah, but this is just programs.
These are just programs and this report right now is static for this year. So I think you brought up the youth commission in the police department last, last time.
Yeah, because there was two different youth commissions and I didn't know that there were two.
Right. And that had to do with SROs. So we thought, well, this is a duplication, we need to get, do away with that. We had some personnel cost and some non-personnel cost associated with that. So those have been reallocated. You won't see the change in this report because then we'd have to send everything back to Chris and John and get it back. So we're kind of redlining those particular programs that we have eliminated. And then when we do the report again next year, they won't show up.
Okay. And then I'd just like to add my support to council or Vice Mayor Pizzillo's, not request, but his support for having the in-focus for 12 months a year. I have found, in talking with the residents, they love the in-focus and they think it's the best way to communicate. I'm assuming that we go out for bid on this and we take the lowest bid or the bid that we think does the most and it's not always the same printer or perhaps it is, I don't know, but it's very competitive. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I, I just agree, if we can find extra money and do it every month, I think it's a wonderful opportunity to get our story told and we're very consistent in telling it.
Just to follow up on that part, back to, and you know, some of these things we could see, we'll be here all night if we don't get all the departments. But my, my question was going to be, you know, I, I agree about the 12 months of in-focus. I, I know that that has been very important. But you know, when it comes down to the digital aspect and maybe, maybe it's not cost-effective right now to do 12 months, I don't know. But if there were supplementals, that something was coming out monthly, that the supplemental was a digital format. Because when I look, I know that our new website is awesome and it's just changed over, you know, within this last year. But for example, the chamber gets monthly a million hits to their chamber website. And it's of course taken years for it to build up. And so I wonder though, if, if as we're trying to build up our website and we focus a little more, you know, on how we get that play to our website, then we can digitally get the, the info, in-focus out there more too, to people that read everything that way, that they don't do it paper-wise. That might be a, a more of a feasible, you know, way to do it that every month, something's coming out, but you know, you're, you're putting attention back on getting people to that website. Because 400,000 is great, but, but it certainly could be a lot, lot better. It really could be. And so, and then that really, you know, then you can drill it down into how many people can be hitting for the ballpark and et cetera, et cetera, where some more money could be coming in with ticket sales. So that's just my, my thought about that.
That's a good idea. Phil?
On the, in, in-focus and Shereen, this may be better directed is, have we ever considered and, or will you consider in your analysis of looking to expand it, privatizing this?
Councilmember Stipp, I believe that had happened at some point before I came here. I believe that the city was working with the West Valley View on the distribution and printing. I don't know the history of why it moved over to bringing it in-house. I'm guessing it has something to do with making sure that it gets delivered so we've got control over when it's being delivered, how it's being delivered, so on and so forth. But if, if that's what you're referring to as far as privatization.
Well, I think we need to, I think we need to look beyond, you know, the, the newspaper concept and that may have been the case a number of years ago. But we have a number of local vendors that, that print, that produce that can perhaps do this on a more efficient scale that I think we should, we should take a hard look at whether we do this internally or not. There's also, you know, we don't hesitate to use a sponsorship at the ballpark.
We tried ads. We did try ads.
Right.
Yeah, and the ad didn't work. That's our hard to battle.
Who's doing, again, are we doing it? Because we don't do that very well. But if we give it to somebody else and say, you can make money doing this, print our material, perhaps there's an incentive in there. I don't know, I'm not in the printing business. But I would love for us to at least have asked the question and for the people who are in that industry to say, that's a great idea, but there's no money in it for me, so I'm not interested in printing it, City of Goodyear. Thank you for contacting me. I'd at least like to know that rather than going on what we did a bunch of years ago. And we certainly know today what the relationship with the West Valley View is like.
I'm glad you stated that because that was going to be my next, next.
I appreciate, yeah, I appreciate that comment, Councilmember Stipp. And we will definitely look into seeing if there's a magazine publisher that is willing to take it on, sell ads. Obviously that would be their way of generating revenue because it's got to make money for them. Whereas bringing it in-house, it's basically you're, you're breaking even, you're just covering cost. And that'll, that'll be the breaking point as to whether somebody that publishes a magazine would be willing to take it on. But we can most definitely look into that.
Shereen?
And not to get into the weeds, but I think we're heading there. I was gonna say, I think this is, we beat this topic up. I, I'm, I'm okay. I think a lot of people do get a lot of information. We did have it 12 months. We had a lot of the recreation schedules there for 12 months. Sometimes now when they come out, they're a little, little behind the curve or they're really early because we don't do it every month. So sometimes those aren't always as, as timely. So I think that's a really good idea. Yeah, we did try the pri, we did, the ads didn't sell, did they? I don't know if it's because we didn't, and I don't know if we wanted to go ads.
I don't know why they didn't.
It's hard to manage also selling ad space and managing those dollars. And then the, the amount of money and resources dedicated into managing the advertising versus just.
It was a good deal though. I mean, I did. It was a good deal.
Some of those magazines that do that have lost content. They've got a lot of ads in them.
All ads.
All ads. So I would not want to leave, lose the.
We don't want to cheapen it.
Now, do we think we've said just about everything on this subject? Because if we, if we get into this depth this many times with this schedule, we will be here very late tonight. I'm almost ready to take a break right now, so.
I just wanted to say one thing. When you're talking about 12 months out of the year, you've got some, and mailing it, you've got some mailing going into the dead file. I mean, a significant number of people are not here in the summer months and so that, that has to be factored into that decision.
Molly?
I'm just, I just want to be sure that we're doing it under our procurement rules, that we're just not going to run out and start pricing with other people just because we're supposed to do it. But we have specific guidelines and rules that we have to follow. So Mr. City Manager, I'm sure you're on top of that.
Mayor, Councilmember Campbell, absolutely. We, we must follow and we do follow our procurement requirements for, because it would be of an amount where it, it would exceed us just going out. be of an amount where it would exceed us just going out there and asking someone to do it. So, we always, always follow that.
Okay, thanks.
Can I go to, can we go to the-
Yeah, this is the only subject matter I've talked about all night, so I've been really good. I'm not trying to beat them to death.
I don't want to cut, no, I'm not going to cut anybody off.
No, I'm done, thank you.
We have, we have done this quite extensively. Does everybody agree it's been talked about enough? Okay.
It looked into.
Yeah, thank you and thank you, Sherry. Okay, so where are we now?
I would like to ask one thing and it has nothing to do with in-focus and this is generally speaking across-
Don't apologize for me for wanting to ask, ask it.
Across the board. Well, you know, printing is in my background, so it's-
Oh, that's right.
So, it's kind of hard for me to, anyway, but the, one of the things that a couple of the departments did was when they went to challenges and opportunities, and maybe I'm the only one that's a little dense in identifying what's an opportunity and what's a challenge, and a couple of the people said, opportunity, da-da-da-da-da, challenge, da-da-da-da. And just even from the perspective of knowing how they're viewing it, whether it's an opportunity or a challenge, would be helpful.
Okay, thank you. I'm assuming they heard that. Larry? Yes, you're on for the Finance Department budget.
Good evening. This is, this is where it gets exciting now.
Right, Larry. You've always been exciting.
One thing we're all going to learn tonight is what, of all the PBB programs that we have, what the employee's favorite one is. We're going to learn that as part of this session. Just thought I'd throw it out and I'll be taking copious notes afterwards that we can get more efficient on it if I'm proven wrong by my colleagues. So, appreciate the opportunity. I will try to keep my comments brief and see if I can make up some of this time, but please do ask the questions as they come through. The Finance Department is broken into six divisions and they're each functional, I think you're pretty well aware of which ones we are and what we work on. The one that isn't quite as obvious from the title as the others is the Special Districts and Tax Administrative. Primarily, that's the CFD Division, but we have a Sales Tax Auditor in there also. And so, it just, that's kind of an odd mix as we're putting it together. Finance Department is about 29 employees, total budget approximately $3.1 million. The breakdown on that into the six divisions is shown on this schedule. And just a few notes of things that we keep a little busy on outside of our regular day-to-day duties. ERP right now is a huge, huge project for our, as far as our staffing goes. We're also quite a bit involved with the City Manager's Office on Asset Management and the various other departments. This past year, we had new auditors and new controller and a new budget manager and a few changes like that that have helped us through. We're working right now on a utility rate study. I do not want to forget, although I did not put it up on the screen here, but I do not want to forget that we completed a development impact fee study that seemed like dragged on for a century. It's actually only a couple of years. As I go through the various quartiles for the Finance Department, first, I'm going to answer the question that you're all dying to know of the favorite program and that is listed in the Quartile One Programs, which is payroll processing. So, I say, I'll be taking notes for any staff that disagree with me as that being the top priority, but, you know, I think pretty much citywide that that's a favorite.
I'm not touching that one.
I'm sorry, did you have any open positions?
All 29 are currently filled. We've filled five of them throughout the year. Most recently, we just filled our, the Senior Account Clerk position, that's our payroll clerk, just been, just filled. She's been here, I believe, about a month now, if my memory serves me correctly. This one, the questions that you've been asking about PBB and how is it impacted, and I received a call, asked me, just, Larry, how's PBB working just from your perspective? What does it look like, that kind of thing? And I wanted to give you a little example because it's, it's a lot broader a concept than I think we've spent time talking about. If you'll notice in Quartile Three, we have a program Legislative and Administrative Analysis. Clearly, that's not a program we can get rid of, keeping on top of the state law and so forth. But part of the PBB process also was the allocation of resources. And as we went through this process, what we found is that our, that particular program is running as the equivalent of almost nine tenths of a person, not just one person doing it, but so many of us, we're on the same conference call, we're on, doing the same thing. And so, that total cost was approximately $100,000. So, we have refined that considerably, the calls that we're doing. I might be the only participant on as opposed to four or five people from the Finance Department. That allows-
Take good notes.
Pardon me?
I said, take good notes.
That's right. Part of that, what we benefit in doing that is, is we're able to apply those resources, obviously, to other tasks within. And so, that's another example in the program that you see this, you know, all 55 programs for the Finance Department have got listed in one sheet so I can see them and that makes it nice to see. By the way, in answer to the question, Quartile One, 30 programs, which make up 68% of the dollars that we spend. Quartile Two-
I think I have to compliment you. You've hit it on the nail on the head that that's exactly what they were asking for.
Well, we hope so. I mean, that's part of the whole process. Quartile Two is 16 programs, which represents 19% of the dollars. Quartile Three, there's five programs. There's one in there that we could remove from the list, but we wouldn't get rid of the program and that's surplus and auctioning. So, little got allocated to it. It only shows a cost of $2,000. But we would still do the same thing, just not identify it as a separate program. That would be the only change in that one. And Quartile Four is four programs, all four of them that you're, you're seeing up on the screen. Fifty-five total.
Fifty-five. Well, may I-
Thirty, sixteen, five and four.
Molly?
Well, then how come on your slide, you've got Quartile One and you have one, two, three, four? Where's the other?
What we're showing, the other-
Twenty-six.
The other programs are on the list that you've seen, the thousand, the list of a thousand.
Yeah, and they're tucked in here in the four.
That's citywide. The Finance Department has 55 of that thousand that you're referring to. What we're showing you, this isn't, this isn't unique to the Finance Department. We're just showing you selected ones out of each quartile to give you examples of what some of those programs are. In our case, because the quartiles three and four, we're able to show all of them because we didn't have that many in those specific quartiles.
Okay, thank you.
So, performance measures, a few of our performance measures are a little bit yes or no. One of the things important to us is to continue to receive the Budget Presentation Award. We have been successful. That's a kind of a yes answer on that particular one. Getting the CAFR done on time is an extremely important one for a lot of reasons that we put that in there. Compliance with the Council Financial Policies. We want to be measuring that. We haven't always been 100%. City Council may decide in a given budget, they don't want to be 100%. We did that a few years ago when we purchased these facilities and now we're back to 100% on those. The bond ratings, want to keep them out there. That's kind of a measure organizationally of how we're doing. And the average call hold time, this is for those cars, calls that are on hold. Remember, we've got the utility customer service, so those people that are having concerns on their account, we want to keep those numbers fairly small. To the question asked earlier, I believe Councilman Holman asked this question about, well, why, why is this number back up when we achieved a lower number? Some of that, just as, as you were told, some of that's just the timing of when these were, were established. We're also, when we set these criteria, the phone system that we have today is the first time we've been able to measure that. So, we're just learning how long it takes. We also have another measurement for how long we're on with each customer, which is just under two minutes per customer. I don't want to push that one real hard because we want to make sure we're addressing their concerns without at the same time being a little bit overly efficient on the process.
Joe?
Larry, are these all the performance measures or just a, just a sample?
Oh, these are a sample of the Finance Department.
The only reason I ask is you recall, we had some issues a while back on reconciling bank statements and, and maybe paying bills on time as far as a performance measure. Is, is one of your performance measures dealing with timely reconciliation of bank statements within a period of time?
Yes. Our, for example, our books for each month, with the exception of June 30th for obvious reasons, are closed within five business days at the end of the month. Yeah, I remember those times very well and they are very much built in. We do have a lot of them that are yes, no type things. They also could easily be work outputs, but that's a lot of what we do. That's the back office stuff that we do and it is obviously, as you described-
But the bank reconciliation is a, is a key one that you're measuring as well, right?
Yes. So, I wanted to talk a little bit about some efficiencies and one of these came up with our, our people looking at, and I didn't know this, when we pay our utility bill, when my wife pays it, actually, I don't pay bills or they'll get forgotten, but my wife pays our utility bill, she banks online. And so, she sends, sends it to, to the bank. And normally, the bank will just transfer it over and send it to the City of Goodyear electronically and it'll automatically get posted into our account and every, everything happens. But if we input that account number wrong, we, meaning my wife or I, input that account number wrong, maybe we don't put the dash in there.
That's right.
Then what happens is that those, the bank does not get a match with that and so the bank actually physically sends us a check. And then that comes to, to my staff who first has to process it through to get it to the right account and then it goes over to another process. So, I've got three people handling that check whereas it's all done electronically. Our staff noticed this problem, went through about a thousand of those accounts and re-set them. You know, obviously, you, you don't change the numbers, but put them in where they're doing. Now, they haven't done the follow-up to see how many of them that worked on that were getting them, but they're trying to get all of those managed so that we're receiving them electronically. We're working with the IT Department to try to develop secure applications and request forms so that the process for signing up or turning off services can be done confidentially and completely online at the same time. And there's some security issues in doing that, but something that we're working on. And then the website pages for our, for our vendors, we, they go in and put information down and then we were going in, one of our staff people was going in and putting that information on a separate page that was really communicating the same information. So, we, you know, we're able to reduce that duplication. And I think you find citywide that that's what people are doing all the time, that that's kind of the whole concept, the lean process and, and everything else. That is what we do as we're working through the organization.
Joe?
Just a quick question. Some of the, I do some similar with the banking, but some of the banks and some of the companies I deal with, I can actually physically go in, put the routing number in and actually pick a date when it's going to hit. And I can set it up regularly or I can go in individually and do it at the first of the month. Are we any closer with IT doing some of those type of things for our customers and utilities?
That's what I'm thinking. That's what we're doing. That's the pay mode process.
Okay, because before it was, it was a different type of thing that you had to go through. And again, it's been a while since I've been there, but they can actually literally go online. Can they pick the day they want it to hit?
Oh, absolutely. They're doing this on their bank account.
Okay.
Not on us.
Okay.
And then it talks to software that we subscribe to that bridges that so that we can communicate. Get any more in that than I'm getting way in.
No, no, I'm just kind of curious because it makes life a whole lot easier when you can do that at the computer.
Yep, good question.
Molly?
Is it, or I know you're working with IT to set up a secure site so that we can terminate our service or add to it. Is that going to be an additional cost to the city and are we going to be able to put that within your budget? Because everyone wants to do everything online now and the more we're able to do that and get a secure facility, I mean, if I can go onto my bank and do all that I'm doing on a secure line, I would hope that we would be able to do the same thing with our new server.
I would expect that that is going to be part of the dialogue as we complete the ERP project. As far as the-
Probably too early, isn't it? I'm sorry, I forgot about that.
The utility billing part of the project, the, the ERP project, I was going to talk about this in another slide, but I'll do it kind of to answer your question.
Okay.
The accounting records are going on July 1st. That's when we're going live with the accounting records and some other things. Payroll will go on January 1st because you don't want to be crossing calendar years if you can avoid it for your W2s and that type of reporting. The utilities and other, others, I'm, I'm just going through what's in my department, will be about June 1st of next year. And so, that's where some of these enhancements, we're going to be working on, working on them today a bit, but as we move forward, okay?
I'm sorry, you know, I totally forgot we weren't up and running. Yeah, but thank you for looking into that.
My staff has not forgotten that we are not.
I bet they haven't. Bless their hearts. But we appreciate them just hanging in there with us.
Okay, this year, the only supplemental we had in the Finance Department was some funding, part-time temporary funding within the procurement office. We were able to use that a little bit as we kind of moved some staff around in the city. We were able to bring someone in, actually, one of our CSRs worked on a temporary basis doing, doing some of the procurement stuff and so forth while we had an employee on loan. It really proved to be a great tool. And then we're also using that a little bit to enhance the backfill on, on our, our staffing as we're doing the ERP project as that's quite a significant commitment to our time. So, challenges and opportunities for the next year, and I have to say, Councilmember Holman, that I, I have a real hard time distinguishing between those two words. I don't, for me, a challenge is an opportunity is kind of how I look at it. And in fact, I have a phrase that I like to use that other people don't like to hear and that's, that's called opera threat, which is anything that's coming up, you can take it as an opportunity or as a threat. And I choose a little bit more on the opportunity side. So, so you're going to get the world to, you know, the world according to Larry as we go through this. So, one of our challenges over the next year is conversion to the SAP system. We've talked a little bit about that. Second part, as is, and this is both an opportunity and a challenge, transitioning the utility billing in-house. Now, we do the bill calculation in-house, but we outsource the actual mailing of the bills. Printing and mailing is outsourced. As we're going into the new system, we're going to explore the ability to bring that back in. Is that more economical? When we outsourced it, it was actually more economical for us to outsource it. They were able to do it for less than what we were paying for postage at the time. But we will revisit that issue as we move forward.
Sherry?
How many, or how, just general, not specific, you probably have specific numbers, never mind, but how many generally of our customers and our citizens get their bill or pay their bill online as opposed to the old mail-out kind? And is there a way that we can incentivize that if we're switching it in-house so more people will pay it online?
I don't have the numbers. We can get you that. I think we've done a pretty good job over the last few years of getting people that are doing their bills online. But I can't tell you directly, but even with that, there's a preparation that goes, it's just an electronic preparation that we're still doing that bill and preparing it.
I just wondered, because you said the mailing and the printing, we're bringing it back. If we could maybe get more people to do that.
Correct. And that, that is a big part of it. And we've been, and the curve that we've been doing, both that and then on the accounts payable side of getting our vendors where we're not issuing them checks, the curves have been increasing as we move along annually. Every year, it's been more than the previous.
For the vendors, do they have an opportu-, I mean, can they request a check or is it, it will be direct deposit?
Our vendors can request checks, but we sure, we do encourage the direct deposit- Our vendors can request checks, but we sure, we do encourage the direct deposit and most of them prefer that.
Yeah.
In most, most places. You're finding places, I won't delve into by a place I was trying to do business with today that I've got to do it all online. Even as I'm looking at the person, they don't take checks there anymore. And it's like, okay, you know, that's the world we're in and that's where we're going to move. As we get into SAP, some of those policy questions are going, we're going to face. Do we want to do that on payroll? You know, many businesses do that where, in fact, a company I worked for 30 years ago, I know you can't believe, I was still working 30 years ago.
Maybe.
Right, yeah. But we actually mandated that all of our employees be on direct deposit. And with that, you would get a debit card that would get refilled if you, if you couldn't do that. We'll, we'll be exploring some of those as we move forward electronically. Really exciting on the procurement side when you mention that. Imagine our bidders being able to go on and build their bid online and then submit it online.
Wonderful.
All, all electronic and then you don't have the transfer of that data coming off, transposition error, because I read the wrong thing when I put your per-price unit or your address or anything else in the system. That's where we're going to be heading and we'll be there this summer with the SAP implementation.
Right.
And a little bit of, hopefully some more efficiencies on, on the, on the CAF. And with that, take any more questions you might have.
Just a general comment, as I had mentioned earlier, when I was looking in the big picture with the PBB and the process that you're talking about and the ERP system, that's where I'm kind of hoping all this is going to end up, is as the system comes on, you're going to find more efficiencies. A lot of the manual processes that you've been doing will go away. So over time, you know, you're, hopefully it's going to make you a little more efficient, needing less new bodies to do the positions as you grow. So that's kind of my, my expectation is, is this thing comes on board, so.
Molly?
Larry, would, I'd like to thank you and on behalf of the council and all of your staff for all that y'all do. We don't have an opportunity to do much with finance. I never see finance as a resident because you take my bill out of my checking account, so I never come in for anything. But we just want to thank y'all and so often you don't get thanked enough for the interaction that all of your staff does with the residents, but we thank you very much because y'all are the face of Goodyear and we appreciate all that you do.
Yeah, I will pass your comments along. My staff will appreciate it.
Thank you, Molly.
Thanks.
So I think human resources is next.
Oh, here comes.
Does anybody need a quick break?
That'd be nice.
Okay, I think what we're going to do is take a 10-minute break.
That'd be great. Sorry, Lyman.
I tried.
My knees are killing me.
I like how you're telling the human resources guy, you're.
Oh, here we go.
Almost like she's filed a complaint.
Okay? All right, Director, Director Lyman Lockett is back at the stand, so please go ahead. Stand. He's on the witness stand.
He's on the witness stand, yeah. Okay.
You know what? Why is this stupid?
Well, Larry brought the excitement, so I guess I'm going to bring the seven o'clock energy. Since everybody's eaten. Just will jump right in to our organizational structure within HR. We, we have a total of 10 full-time equivalents in our department and a total budget of 275, 2.75 million, excuse me.
107.5, wow! We got to get Larry, we got to get Larry back up here.
How's that for energy?
It's good.
And within that, we have our traditional areas, traditional functional areas. Am I on here? I just clicked off. There we go. Traditional functional areas of compensation administration. We have organizational development. Underneath organizational development, we have employee relations and labor relations. And we also have the functional area of risk and safety administration. Breaking it down a little bit further, you can see where our budget lies within each of those areas and our FTE count. In addition to what you see here, we have two ASU wellness interns and we have four volunteers and those volunteers primarily help us out in risk and safety and they're also helping us out with our wellness, or excuse me, with our volunteer program. We currently have one vacancy. That vacancy is relatively new. Within the last two weeks, we're currently recruiting for that and hope to have that filled by mid-May. We also have on loan, we have Kristen Williams from the city manager's office as part of ERP, and I'll talk a little bit about ERP. We had budgeted backfill, but we are working through some creative efficiency processes to bring Kristen in for halftime to assist us in HR. So we're saving a little bit of money there organizationally. You also see a, a budget supplement there of $3,000. That was for the implementation of our learning management system target solutions. And I'll talk a little bit more about that as well. Looking a little bit further at our priority-based budgeting, we have a total of 53 programs in human resources. We have 14 in quartile four, 23 in quartile three, 13 in quartile two, and three in quartile one. The, speak a little bit about our programs in quartile one. Probably most significant is the ERP, which is going to have a major impact on human resources. Today with HTE, we, we don't have a true human resource management system, so we will be upgrading to a true human resource management system, allowing us to do things in benefits administration, personnel administration, things that we're not currently doing, but will gain a lot of efficiencies through that process and also be able to, I, I think, impact our ability to make data, data-driven decisions more effectively. So quartile one, I think, most significant again is the ERP element of that. Quartile two, we have a number of programs, one of which is our recruitment and selection. This year, year-to-date, we've posted 56 jobs throughout the city and these are positions that we have filled through a, a competitive recruitment process. Through that process, we've accepted over 6,500 applications. So that's one of the things we do, obviously, in human resources. We also have our program in our safety-related area where we're administering the new CDL program. A lot of effort goes into that. There are new restrictions out for CDL programs and we're working hand-in-hand with the clinic to feed that and offset the costs that we would normally be sending outside the city. So that's one of the occupational medicine enhancements that we have through the clinic.
I'm sorry, Lyman, again, maybe I just missed it. What's the learning management system? What is that again?
Uh, learning management system, that's our target solutions. Our learning management system is a system in which we gather training data. We also deploy training, so we're also using it to gather information on credentials. So all of our training efforts are catalogued in our learning management system. We have our required training that we have for all employees. We monitor the completion of that training through our learning management system. We monitor required mandated training through that. We have three separate elements of that, one for the city as a whole. Fire has a very robust element of that, as does PD, to monitor all of their required trainings. A new element of that is the credentials, where we are now building our credentialing in, so we know when CDLs may expire so that we're getting people tested at the appropriate time and licenses and credentials are not lapsing. So we're building those elements into the learning management system right now.
Joe?
Well, this slide you have up there, what is that 27,500 number for the volunteers' hours? What does that encompass?
Those are actual volunteer hours, so those are hours logged by each volunteer. This year-to-date, we have 279 volunteers, so those are all the hours logged by that group of employees.
So is that the ballpark at all the different departments? Is that every volunteer hour? Now, that doesn't include Make-A-Difference with the churches and all that?
Does not include Make-A-Difference Day.
That's just volunteers that are logged through us?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
It's a lot of hours.
Indeed it is, and I have another number here that I'll show you in a minute that we've looked at it from an efficiency perspective to see how much dollars that equates to. A few of our other performance, key performance measures are the ratio of promotions to total hires. We, we monitor this to measure the effectiveness of our, our training programs. One of our goals is to prepare our employee base to fill the needs of the city. So this is one way of measuring it, when we have been able to fill a promotional opportunity through an internal, through, through an employee, existing employee through the city as opposed to an external employee. So we have a target of 33%. We're actually at 38% now. Again, volunteer hours, we spoke about that, so we're looking at all of our volunteer hours excluding those for Make-A-Difference Days and, and some of our daily efforts or one-day efforts, I should say. We also are looking at, and, and this is an effort that we've been spending a lot of time trying to quantify the relationship between what we're spending from a wellness standpoint and also look at wellness as a whole. How does wellness impact the city? How does the health and wellness of our organization impact the city? One of the things that we use is a biometric screening and a health risk assessment. We're going to continue to do that. We're monitoring what percentage of our organization participates in that. You'll see that we've been at 100%, which is off the charts. Very few organizations get 100%. You'll also see that we have a lower target for fiscal year 2015. Part of that is because we're changing the way we're doing things so that we can collect the data and get a better indicator of organizational health. So we are now working closer with Cigna and we're changing our provider so all of that information funnels into Cigna and we can look at a true health indicator for the organization. We think that'll help us drive a couple of things. One, we hope it drives down our, our cost, one in a way that Cigna can see how healthy our organization is. And for us, what's the impact of our wellness programs? We, we want to measure the effectiveness of our wellness programs. So when we look at things like cardiovascular disease throughout our organization, we can look year-over-year to see if our wellness programs and efforts are actually having an impact on those things. And we hope that also correlates with our dollar spend in those areas. Medical loss ratio is another area that we're, we're monitoring. Don't want to get too far ahead of myself. We'll spend more time talking about this at the presentation on the, the 20th of April. But just suffice it to say that, that 96% is very high. One of the things that's driving that are high-dollar claims. So we're monitoring where those dollars are coming from and we're also looking at ways, obviously, to bring those things down, part of which will be various funding, funding options for our health insurance as well as other elements of our wellness program. Lastly, we have a, a new key performance measure and, and that's how many employees have gone through the innovation training or the lean training. So our goal is to have 100% of our employees through that training. We're moving at a rapid pace and we're monitoring to ensure that all employees indeed have made it through the training. Efficiencies, I mentioned earlier, this is a number that we have calculated that illustrates the savings for our volunteer program. So over a half million dollars, almost $600,000 that we're generating through the assistance of volunteers. We're, we're always trying to increase that number. Part of our efforts are geared at finding opportunities for volunteers that we may not otherwise be able to find opportunities for in the city. Some volunteers come and they'd like to do certain things that from time to time, we may or may not have an opportunity for them. So we're, we're constantly looking for ways to, to put their, their skills to use. With regard to efficiencies from a wellness program, one of the things that we are continually looking at are our clinic, our clinic performance. With our clinic performance, how fast do we get people back to work? And one of those measurements that we're looking at from an efficiency standpoint is wait time at the clinic. So right now, we're under three minutes for wait time. So when you check in the clinic to the time that you're seen by the medical provider, we're now under three minutes. And this is something that we've been looking at and we're actually getting more data from the clinic with the new provider that we have. But how quickly can we get people back to work? Those are some of those intangibles when we start looking at clinic costs that, again, we're quantifying those so that we can show the true value of the clinic.
May I, may I ask a question, please? Are we still operating only by appointment?
Good question. We're operating primarily by appointment. If an employee has an issue that comes up, they can call the clinic the day of and the clinic, in many cases, will work them in that day if they have availability or if the illness or issue that the employee has is such that they need to be seen right away. Those are obviously on a case-by-case basis based upon the availability, but primarily, I would say about 80 to 85% of the visits are by appointment only.
Do you have a number of how many appointments we have given our employees or how many employees have actually used that health facility?
We, we have, I don't have a number at hand, but we do have numbers as to how many appointments we've had through the year. We're also monitoring utilization. So we know how many, each day that we're open on a regular day, we have 28 appointment opportunities. So we're monitoring how many of those we're filling each day, when we're reaching capacity. The good news, and one of the things that we are also beginning to monitor, is, is there a relationship between how our employees are utilizing the clinic and our medical loss ratio?
Yeah.
So this year, what we've seen, we've actually experienced a little bit of a downtick in our utilization at the clinic. Along with that, we are also seeing our medical loss ratio come down. We know that the flu season did not hit us like it did in the rest of the country. So we're, we're experiencing that in our clinic. So we are monitoring utilization, monitoring when and if we may need to look at expanding services, but right now, we're, we're at a good place.
And we're not getting any complaints from our employees that they're not able to get into the clinic?
Not at this time.
Good.
We, we went through the transition and we had some rough patches there, but we've worked our way through that and again, we're down to three, that, that three-minute, under that three-minute barrier for wait time and our complaints have subsided. We also now do a survey after every visit.
Oh, that's good.
For our employees. So we're getting data back. We've gotten, we're going to tweak that a little bit to dig a little bit deeper into employees' experience at the clinic so that we know we're giving quality care at the clinic.
Oh, good, thank you.
Jerry?
Yeah, and I, like we were talking about before, I think you mentioned it, to quantify how much of a savings this is to the city, I think that would be some interesting numbers because, and, and that, would you also include like, I guess, lost employee time or how getting the employees back? Obviously, there's a loss if employee's off, no, that job's not getting done. Would that be something you could quantify somehow?
I, I think we can, we can put a number on it and we will. On the 20th, I'll have more data for you with regard to the cost savings that we're getting from the clinic. I think it's always a challenge because some of the dollar costs are going to be soft, but we're, we're going to look at lost time. One of the, if you look at all the research with regard to those- One of the, if you look at all the research with regard to those that are putting clinics in place, absenteeism is one of those soft dollar, soft dollars that are significant with people's lost time at work. So we, as best we can, will also try and quantify that. That's kind of a shot, if you will, not necessarily in the dark, but I think we can look at when people may have otherwise left work or taken the day off to go to the doctor when they were able to be seen at the clinic. Because we are also monitoring the types of visits that people are having at the clinic. Supplementals, we had two supplementals this past year. I spoke about the learning management system briefly. And I think, again, if I could put a finger on one of the things that this is bringing, it's giving us the ability to keep a pulse on training. Where are we at from a training standpoint? Where are we spending training? What training are our employees responding to? So it's giving us more data from a, just an overall employee development perspective. And the credentialing piece is tremendous. We'll continue to build that out and that'll be a great enhancement for the city. The clinic cost increase, we did have an increase in cost. I spoke about some of the things that we're getting out of the clinic and I'll come back with additional information as to how we are saving money with our clinic.
Joanne?
Simon, just, I know you weren't here during the time, but I remember really, truly how important training is in our city and during a time where we were having to reallocate people to other areas and we went without a real train, Sandra had to be repositioned somewhere else to be used. And I just remember having that year without anybody, or year or year and a half, without anybody getting training and then we saw a change in just our citizen survey of customer service and how really that training is so important to what occurs here in our city.
Great point and I think that's also validated through our employee survey that we did last year. Employees are wanting the growth opportunities, an opportunity to learn. So they're telling us that loud and clear. We are also monitoring the quality of our training. So that's another element that the LMS gives us the opportunity to do is to look at training quality. When you go to a training class, are you getting something out of that training? We are also deploying more online training. So there's an opportunity to broaden our training offerings through both in-class training as well as online. So we've significantly increased our number of online courses as well. Challenges and opportunities, the first two, well, let me hit the first one. The first one is obviously an ongoing challenge. The rising cost of healthcare, it has not stopped, will not stop probably in our lifetime and medical trend right now is eight to nine percent. So it continues to ratchet up faster than inflation. So that's one of our ongoing challenges. We are looking at a series of things and have continued to look at a series of things. Again, that's an area that I'll report a little bit in more depth on. But I will say that we've looked at funding opportunities, self-funding, level funding, pools and consortiums. Each time an opportunity for a cost savings effort comes up, we're certainly more than interested. We're leveraging our broker. Our broker is really in tune to what's happening from a market perspective, what the various insurance companies are doing and is always testing the waters with regard to whether it's the appropriate time to go out to bid or look at other opportunities. So we've got some interesting things that I'm looking forward to presenting to you. We, the other two, these are both challenges again, Arizona retirement and our public safety. These are areas where I think we're keeping our eye on them. Actually, Arizona state retirement or contribution rates are going to go down slightly this year. In PSPRS, they're going up. However, the good news there is that we are not in as bad a shape as some of the other entities. But the reality is they estimate that about 10,000 baby boomers per day are retiring. So the reality is we're going to have more people retiring. We're beginning to see that trend, although our turnover rates are still stable. We're going to continue to see that trend, so I think those continue to be challenges for us. The last thing that I had was workforce planning and this is an opportunity. I think as we do more workforce planning and succession planning, we have to be ready. We know we're a growing city, we're the sixth fastest-growing city in the country. So how do we prepare? How do we recruit? How do we make sure that we're bringing people into the organization that have the skills that can continue to fuel that growth and meet the expectations of the city? So from a workforce planning standpoint, those are opportunities that we see going forward.
Carolyn?
Do we have a mandatory retirement agent?
No, we don't.
Uh-uh.
No. And that's it for me? Questions?
Good question.
Questions?
Well, I appreciate you, your comment about the brokers looking at the best time to go out to bed. I got a notice today that my insurance premium is going up 85 percent as of July 1. So it is a huge hit for me to have the coverage that I have. So and there's nothing I can do about it unless I want less coverage. So sometimes it's out of our hands and I appreciate you doing your diligent, due diligence on it.
Joe?
Just to follow up on the public safety retirement system, it's my understanding there's some plan that we've got to kick in to shore it up besides the percentage of contribution that we're going to be making. Is there a plan and we have dollar amounts of how that's going to amount? Is that a finance that's going to happen during the budget process?
Finance, yes. And I know Larry's going to be speaking to that through the budget process.
Okay. On April 20th? Okay. All right.
August sounds good.
August. August won't work.
We'll be on vacation.
Okay, that's fine.
Any other questions?
You'll be all by yourself.
Thank you very much. All right, let's go on to Director Michelle Laurie, present economic development. Wow. Okay.
Mayor and council, as a reminder of what I said at the very start of tonight, we'll actually have these three directors sitting here together. So it'll be economic development and then we'll have Katie Wilkin representing the development service department, followed by our engineering director Rebecca Zuck. So they'll each do their own individual presentations and then together they'll do challenges and opportunities at the end.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Very glad to be here with you, thank you. And let's get right into economic development. The slide that you're looking at right now, you'll see two organizational charts and I'll explain why that is. The first one was created at the beginning of the fiscal year 2015 in August and that was when the economic development department or division was within development services. So at that time, the total division of full-time employees, there were four and there were two that were open at that time. And the total budget was $531,520. As the department was reestablished in October of 2014, the department became six full-time employees. And this really changed, the way that this happened is that economic development absorbed two positions from development services, establishing the department as six-time full employees. Those two positions were the deputy director of development services, which became the director of economic development and the development services management assistant was transferred to the economic development department. Those position shifts and the $30,000 of ongoing funding was transferred from the development services department to economic development, resulting in the increase you see there of the budget to 668,911. And I'll note that the management assistant of the bottom chart should be outlined in red and that is because with the promotion of Jesse Peterson a few weeks ago from management assistant to project manager, that position is now open and we're recruiting for that position right now. And then the second slide, you'll see that economic development, we only have one division budget, so a little different from a lot of the departments that we've seen so far tonight. We only have one division and that was the base budget as it was adopted, as it reflects on the slide, beginning of fiscal year 2015, including the four full-time employees. As mentioned on the previous slide, some of the highlights for economic development included the re-establishment of the department or the division as a department, the hiring of a new department director and also the reassignment of the management assistant position as well as the hiring of a project manager to focus on small business. Economic development did not submit any supplemental requests for 2015. On the slide here talking about our priority-based budget programs, we only have four programs in the whole department. Two are quartile one and two are quartile two. We do not have any three or four programs, quartile three or four programs. So we just thought we'd give a highlight of a couple here as we were asked. And I'll give you the first one. The two quartile one programs incorporate really the fundamental mission of the economic development department, which is to attract, grow and preserve quality businesses in our community. So those two are quartile one programs and they include just a few things. Maintaining ongoing relationships with our business development partners like Greater Phoenix Economic Council and the Arizona Commerce Authority. Participating in aggressive recruiting efforts at trade shows for targeted industries nationwide. Building and sustaining relationships with our existing business community. Providing proactive outreach and resources to our small business community. Promoting entrepreneurship and business startups through the Innovation Hub. And our highlighted quartile two program there is marketing. And that's, it's very closely intertwined, like a lot of the different quartile programs, very closely aligned with the quartile one programs. The economic development marketing program supports the city's strategy for business attraction, promotion and retention. Marketing includes the creation and development of messages and materials that were used to promote Goodyear toward economic opportunities and is used during recruitment missions and meetings and so forth. And our other quartile program, two program, just so you know, it's the citywide initiatives, which includes functions such as general department administration, budget development and management, including PBB, strategic planning, development and tracking, records management, city council actions and city staff performance measures. So that's another quartile two program.
Joanne?
You know, there's, I will say, I know you said you didn't come back for any supplementals, but for marketing, for your department, I would be willing to give you a one-time supplement if you really found something out there that you guys needed to get on the bandwagon to go check out and bring some companies out. I'd be supporting you for that, so just keep that in the back of your mind.
Thank you.
Michelle, this isn't really a question, I guess, necessarily for you, is it more, is a generic observation? When we look at all of the PBB quartiles, one through fours, in all of the departments, there's a lot of very specific programs and the ones in economic development are very broad. And it makes me wonder if we're just not, I don't want to say glossing over because I don't want to mischaracterize that, but it doesn't seem as though perhaps when PBB went through economic development before you arrived that it was given perhaps the attention that it was given in all of the other agencies. For example, there are some of these that are on the list that we were provided last week that many of us commented were fairly routine. These are things that we do all the time, but yet it shows up as a program. And the, if you've only got four, that tells me that we haven't gone deep enough yet into what it is that you guys are doing because you could very easily say everything we do is related to business development and attraction and business retention and expansion. That's it. We don't do anything else and that's not true. How much effort are we spending at the Innovation Hub and how much are we getting out of it? You know, what are we doing for the small business retention? What programs are there? I mean, there's got to be things that you're doing other than just this very generic. So I'm not necessarily looking for an answer, but I think going forward, I'd like to see a lot more specificity, at least on what are the things that are going on in economic development.
Great, when appropriate, I'd love to provide that for you. Thank you. Any more questions on this slide?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, I'll go ahead on the next slide then. Let's see, and this is, this slide, we've highlighted four of our performance measures to show you and they're very standard across the cities. They are standard to economic development, capture the resulting activity associated with the programs outlined on the previous slide. And just to go over just a few of those, there are numbers of jobs created from new and or expanding businesses, total capital investment from new and or expanding businesses as well, number of new prospects and the total number of business interactions through the business retention and expansion program.
You know, we have a lot of companies looking at us and they come and go and some stick. Do we ever keep track of that and do we have measures on, you know, why we didn't acquire the company? Do we have, do we have records like that?
We do, we do and I think a report that will be given to you starting April and April will be a quarterly report based on kind of what those projects that we had out there and you probably hear about things and go, well, what happened to that one or what were the? And really, why did we lose it? Is it still in the process? Where is it and what are the answers to those questions? So we will have that report.
That would be most helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, to the 45 prospects, how many did you land? I mean, you know, that's, that shows the other side of it.
Right, this is the number of companies. And I do have that information for you in terms of the number of companies. It doesn't look like that's on there, it's just jobs and, but we do, I do have that that I can provide for you at another time, yeah.
Sure. Joe?
Go ahead and I'll be last.
I'm not even sure where to, how do you even, this is a good thing, I guess. In, I think it was Friday night at church, I was confronted, I guess is the best way to say it, about we need to do something with our economic development. Aren't there people that do something and then they started to go off on this tangent? You know, Surprise is always getting this stuff. And I said, hold on a minute, told the rest of the story, well, I didn't know that. So there seems to be a lot of that that goes on with economic development. And I know, you know, I did a piece for, you know, a sound off or my turn thing in the West Valley View and have committed a couple of the in-focus articles talking about how does economic development actually work? But as part of our marketing, and I know that's across, the marketing that you guys are doing is different than the marketing or the messaging that communications is doing. But we've got to find a better way to instill the confidence in our community that we are actually being very successful in what it is that we're doing. You know, Surprise made the big announcement, they've got the one warehouse that, you know, they got 125 jobs, which is great. But at the same time, we are having a groundbreaking for Michael Lewis Company, which is a couple hundred jobs. And we've got, you know, another groundbreaking and then, you know, another one right after that. So we're not getting that message out. And I think that becomes a conflict between the marketing that you're investing in, which is to the business community and the marketing part or telling the story piece. So I think we've got to try to get a better effort at that. Because once I explain the rest of the story, then this person will go, well, I didn't have any idea and we don't know that.
Maybe the additional in-focus will take care of that because we're always behind. So, you know, maybe that, that's one of them. I'm sorry, I didn't see who wanted to go next.
I'll go after whoever's next.
Okay. Well, now I forgot what I was going to ask.
Well, I'll go to Joe if you want me to do it.
Yeah, go to Joe and then come back to me, maybe I'll be, is important.
First of all, I echo what Councilmember Stip just said, I agree. I hear it all the time too. And I explain what's going on and what's in the pipe work and et cetera because for some reason... some reason, what you're doing and what actually gets out there in the public, there might be a little bit of a disconnect. But to piggyback on what Councilmember Osborne said, you know, it's great on the prospects, but I'd like to know what was directly landed as a result of the efforts. And two, when it comes to business retention, what businesses actually decided to stay here as a result of our efforts? Because to me, that's, that's a measure.
Okay.
Because you're getting results out of what you're actually doing on there. So I would love to see those two pieces, what actually landed and then what, you know, we retain. Because to me, it's just as important to retain our businesses that are here. So how many of them thought about going somewhere, they sat down with economic development, we resolved whatever issues they had, and next thing you know, they decided to stay. I think that's just as important as well. The second piece, on the total number of business interactions, can you explain why it's going from 218 to 110? Because to me, that's also very important with what our business liaison person's doing out there as far as getting to meet the business and getting around and talking with them. As he, it can't have gotten to all of them, because I know we have more than that, so why is it going from 218 to?
Yeah, that is a good question, Vice Mayor, thank you. I, I do appreciate that question and I think that does look a little low. We probably do need, just being conservative and probably do need, maybe it was something predates me, but I think it was probably something just being a little conservative on that, on that end.
Mayor, if I may, and Vice Mayor, that, that is for this, this current fiscal year. So as we look at that, but these were at a point in time, if you will, so the FY16 target, you'll, you'll truly see that increasing. So, but yeah, that's, that's one challenge with this one slide is, it was looking at it when it was budgeted and then what we're seeing in its actuals. So that's, that's a challenge on this.
Yeah, I think that's real important, to make sure that we keep our current businesses happy and, and we find ways of keeping them here as well, so.
I guess the reason I wanted the ones that we didn't get, I want a measure of why. I think it's very valuable to us to know, are we providing enough for economic development? Was it an infrastructure? Was it something like that? And, and we have so much infrastructure yet to put in. And so I, I think we have some missing pieces and that's why they go to some. I know with Surprise, they went because of the rail and they got that company. So, you know, you can follow up and you know where some of the companies are going. But infrastructure, because everything we do is new, except the small businesses. And so I would like it tracked for those reasons, to know as a council where we, we need to come to the table on, on furnishing more funds to be able to accomplish that.
Absolutely. And I remember now, Mayor, thank you.
Oh, good, go on, Molly.
Two things. Number one, I'm assuming that we have a very active website up and running now for economic development. It might be helpful if in our, in focus, you had a box or a column or something, every single time we go to print of what we have done in economic development, that we have gone to 10 trade shows, that we have talked to 25 prospective employees, and we've landed one company or something. Because it goes back to the conversation Bill had with someone at church that they didn't know. We can put that information out and hopefully they'll read it. But if they know to look for that, you know, because we're having to re-educate all of our residents that we now have a website that is user-friendly and it works. Because so many of us, and I'm included, got to where I didn't even want to use the old website at all, because it was just too hard. I could never find what I was looking for. So, you know.
Have you tried the, develop Goodyear AZ?
Yeah. It's just a new, you know, we have this new website, it's wonderful, and I just think you need to toot your horn, because you need to put it out there for them. And we can't do it every three months or every six months, because there's too much lapse that they think we're not doing anything, that we're not talking to Trader Joe's and we're not bringing in new businesses, you know? And they read that all these other businesses going somewhere else, they want to know what Goodyear's doing.
I notice that, too, if you don't mind me saying that, I, when I go out and do different town halls and things like that, in the short time that I've been here, I definitely get that. And there's an education that needs to be done, too, about why we, you know, maybe why we're focusing on aerospace and aviation, healthcare, that sort of thing, when they want restaurants. So, you know, explaining that those bring in, when you get those businesses, that's what you need to bring in, you know, the retail and entertainment. Important things that I think, I think you're absolutely right on that.
Mm-hmm.
Carrie?
Yeah, I was actually gonna use those same words, we need to toot our own horn a lot better. I mean, we've got a, we've always had a really strong chamber here. And I think the city's deferred to a lot of that to the chamber, rather than like what Surprise does. Surprise is always out there in the media saying, you know, in Peoria, we just got this business or this business, you know, and it's all over.
Well, the one thing, they get it in the media. Our newspaper's not very cooperative with that, so we don't have a lot of things in the, in the newspaper.
But we can at least try to get it out, you know, and even just, you know, the news, not just necessarily the West Valley View, but there's also the news and everything. Because I think something else, when we do talk to the residents, a lot of them think, and I know we heard this a lot, is you can just pick up the phone and call Trader Joe's and they're going to come. So I, I don't think there is that education, like you said, and I think we need to work on the marketing and if we need a supplement or we need, you know, the in-focus or to connect your website and get that out, we really do need to get that out, because the residents, I mean, if we can get them supportive and know that they're doing something, I think that'll also help, because then when we say we need infrastructure, we'll have the support of the residents to get the infrastructure built, to bring the businesses. So I think we've got to work on all those components. And I think you're doing a great job for being here such a short time, but that's what we've seen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, I was just gonna add a little bit to that, because that was truly during our election time, those, that was one of the top things people wanted to hear about, you know? And letting people know that you are an aggressive department and that, you know, the areas that even if you can't focus in on, you've gone out to get the groups to help you, you know, Retail Coach and the different groups like that, that are, that are helping you with the, all the different areas of economic development. And people want to hear about it. You know, I think they, you know, it was that and streets and parks, that's what I was hearing about. And so, you know, we don't always want to be the best kept secret, you know, we, I hate to say it, but those, and we always throw in-focus out there as being the, the item, you know? And everybody, we sit there saying, you should have your own little section or you should, and it's true, though, because every, every time we hear from different residents, it always seems to come back to some of these key issues. And, you know, I, I think that, back to what we discussed a few council meetings before about the notes to notes that, you know, I mean, those are those little blasts of, of information that people like to hear. And even from your GPEC days, the, the reports that we would always get, the GPEC pipeline, those are things that we always quickly refer to and you could see how many, you know, well, you, you were part of it, you know what they said, but it was great information. And I think that's what our residents might like to kind of hear about, too.
Well, I look forward to working on a communication like that for economic development, something we've considered, and working with the communications department on, on really doing a better job at that.
Mm-hmm. Jill?
I just want to say, it's not a one-shot deal, though. It's just not one-time with GPEC. It's continually.
It's consistent.
Yes, thank you, sorry.
You know, one of the things that I, that seems to have been a fairly constant message tonight about the in-focus and whatnot, has really been about, because we have no outlet, is making that our outlet to communicate. And I know, you know, after we took that break and whatnot, I thought about the last in-focus that we probably all just received. And if it's eight pages, if it's eight pages, there were four or five pages that were dedicated to the Parks and Rec programs that we offer, which, and I don't want to, I'm not taking any, anything away from the Parks and Rec stuff, but if that's our only mode of communication, we drive everybody to the website for everything else, why are we not driving, why is it four or five pages of that and not toward the rest of it? You know, and I think there, we need to, we need to achieve some balance. And I realize that Parks and Rec pays, pays for part of it, and I know one, one episode, one issue, thank you, one issue a year is dedicated to the water reports, so the water department pays for part of it. But I think the consistent, consistent theme that we're saying tonight is that needs to be a better tool for us and perhaps less, if the intent is to drive people to the website, then drive them there. You know, that 470,000 hits may need to be, may need to be greater. But we need to drive them there and, and maybe make this a little bit more, more effective for us.
Google Analytics.
Okay. Moving on, sorry, moving on to the next slide then. So efficiencies, so we've identified some key actions that have resulted in departmental efficiencies this year. The re-establishment of the economic development as a standalone department was really vital toward the city's Focus on Success Strategic Action Plan. So that's one thing. Secondly, the recruitment of a small business project manager enabled the department to increase its outreach to our small business community and prospective small businesses as well, which is a primary goal in Focus on Success. So that's been great. We've also created a cross-departmental agreement with Development Services to share the management assistant support and the administrative assistant support, as economic development currently has a management assistant but not an administrative assistant and vice versa with Development Services. So we have an interdepartmental agreement that we share both, so that's been very helpful. So good efficiency there. And then finally, economic development has obtained the support of a city volunteer to help with mostly the department's records management, but those have been, those have been really great and good, good hours spent. And then just to reiterate that economic development did not submit any supplemental requests for 2015.
I think you heard the comment before.
Yeah, I did, I definitely did.
They would like to look forward for that.
There will be some.
Thank you. Oh, oh, we're, I'm gonna stop here, I'm gonna stop here, because we're gonna do challenges and opportunities together.
Okay, all right, great.
Thank you.
Just asking.
Be patient. So who's next? Katie?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll be giving the presentation for Development Services, and I know Ed Kulik would have liked to have been here, but he's at ICC in Chicago this week.
Oh, yeah, good for him.
So this first slide is the organizational structure that was in the budget book, and Michelle touched on that already. So it shows economic development, which is, those positions are highlighted in red, which moved into its own department. We also had five positions, the front counter technicians recently moved over to under the engineering department, which Rebecca will probably talk about. So I don't want to beat that too much, since you've already seen some of this. So this is what our organizational structure looks like today with 22 full-time employees and a total budget of $3.1 million. We include four divisions, administration, planning and zoning, building safety, and code compliance. And then we had our one-time supplementals for our total budget of $3.1 million.
Molly? Do you have any open positions?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we have three open positions. One is the director, but that has been filled, he just hasn't started yet. So we're very excited for Christopher to start on the 20th. And then we do have a planner vacancy, which was my position. And we do have a temporary person in there right now, so there is a body, but it's a temporary, we need to open it up to fill it full-time. No, no. And then we do have a building inspector position open.
Okay, thank you.
We have 13 priority-based programs in Development Services and 10 of which are quartile one programs and three of which are quartile two programs. And just a sampling of the quartile one includes the building side of plan review, building construction inspections, code compliance, and then the planning, plan review. Some of our quartile two programs include regional planning activities, which will include some of the things we do with MAG, citywide initiatives, and records management. Oh, yeah, thanks. Just a sample of some of our performance measures include things such as how many, what percentage of our construction plan reviews are public, completed within our published review times, which was 91% in 2014, and our current target is 95%. How many of our single-family permits were approved within seven days? And we hit 95% and that was our same target. And then what percent of our graffiti calls are inspected within one day of the call? Some of our efficiencies include having the Development Services Director focus back on building safety and planning and zoning will assist our divisions a lot, because the director was very focused on economic development when we were combined. So we think that'll provide a lot of emphasis to the development review process. We did, Michelle already touched on our two departments sharing some of our administrative support. We also, you had a presentation recently on the building code update that provides a lot of efficiencies for our customers, so that they're using similar codes throughout the county. Same with our zoning ordinance updates, that provides a lot of efficiencies for our customer, but it does help staff in our review as well. And finally, we updated the design guidelines this year, which again, it provides a lot of efficiencies for our customer, but it does help staff have a much easier-to-use document as well. Our supplementals, the big one was completing the general plan, which, you know, we've all heard many, many times, we got ratified this year. Our second one was building maintenance, which was to do some remodeling to the front counter area. Some of that has been delayed, but we are moving forward with some things like painting. We have a TV monitor, we're gonna be rearranging some of the cubicles so that there's better customer service and it looks a little more professional up there. And then finally, we did hire an intern. We actually had two interns last summer, they helped with the general plan, with some of our city stats and some other things we were working on. And then one of the interns has worked with us for the entire following year, and she's actually the person who's, we hired her temporary to fill in for our planner three, for our vacant planner position in the meantime, until we fill that full, because she did such a fantastic job as an intern. And then, as Michelle said, we're presenting our opportunities and challenges together.
Yes, and now we have Director Rebecca Zook, engineering budget.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure for me to be here with you all this evening and my development partners up here. It's a, it's a real thrill for us to get to present together this evening. First of all, I'd like to have a quick look at the organizational structure for the engineering department. We have, and I'm happy to say, when we put this together, we had 40 FTEs with three vacancies, but we are just about ready to fill all three of those vacancies. We have our permit administrator will be starting with us on April 20th. And then we have a signal technician two, that position is filled, they will start with us on May 4th. And then for a streets maintenance worker two, that position has been offered and so we're in the process of filling that as well. And in addition to the engineering staff, we have also absorbed the permitting staff, as Katie had mentioned, into the engineering group. Now, this was nothing more than administrative change, for the most part, the relationships that that, those staff at the front counter, and again, that's why we're here together this evening, is that those five staff members represent the entire Development Services team. They're able to answer questions with respect to economic development and steer our customers in the direction of the most appropriate staff members in that group, as well as we have staff members that are specific to planning and building and engineering, but we're also working on cross-training of all of those staff members. So regardless of which department they are actually housed in, they represent the team as a whole. In addition to that, we have three primary functions within the engineering organization, organizational structure. We have a traffic group that handles all of transportation and traffic-related items, as well as general engineering. And then we have the Development Services Group, also housed within engineering. The majority of our staff is focused on outward-facing customer service. That's not only the counter staff, but all of the development staff. We interact with engineers, architects, we're working with developers, residential home builders. In addition, we have our capital group. We're constantly interacting with engineers and different people within the development community and working cohesively as a group. Our total budget is just under $9 million. There's approximately 45% of that is in the highway user revenue fund. And here's a breakdown of the specific divisions within engineering. Within our group, we have two primary administrative support staff that support our group. In addition, we have divisions within engineering that actually reach out to all of the other In addition, we have divisions within engineering that actually reach out to all of the other departments. One example of this is our project management in CIP. The managers, project managers in that group actually work on behalf of all of the departments. So whether it's a project that is coming out of parks or water and wastewater, we manage those projects on behalf of those departments. So they're, in a sense, our customer, and we're serving them to make sure that we are running the program to service them as well as our citizens. Another group that reaches out to all of the other departments is our GIS group. We handle the mapping for the entire city, and so we're able to put into the system all of the water and sewer that is built, the roadway structure. We have all of our assets are in there, all of our signage. And so we're able to provide information to any department that is in need of it. We provide maps. We work with the development group significantly. We're also working with economic development and providing maps, whether it's for our customers or for, whether they're external or internal customers. In addition, the traffic and transportation group, they do an enormous amount of work for us out in the public right-of-way. Not only are they sweeping just under 900 lane miles per month within the city, but they're doing things such as filling potholes, replacing our signs, sidewalk panels when we get a complaint on those, when we have clogged drains. And I want to add in, I've got a note up there about public stuff, and we mentioned this just briefly in a previous presentation. It's my understanding from the city manager's office who monitors this that 85% of those public stuff notifications that come in are steered toward streets. And so we're very, we're very excited that we have the participation in the community because they are our eyes as well to make sure that we're doing a good job, and so that's a huge help for us. And then I'd like to touch on slightly on in-house design. We have, within the engineering department, we have very talented staff, so we have been able to utilize some of our engineers within the group to do some in-house designs that have saved the city. For one particular design I'm thinking of, approximately $20,000 for a waterline design. And then also for a fiber optic network design, saved us upwards of $100,000. And so we're tapping into those engineers that we have on staff when they have the availability in which to do that type of work on our behalf. I'm going to touch on here our priority-based budgeting. I feel a little special that I'm the only one up here that had three and four quartiles. So our overall, I skipped a bunch of pages here. We have 109 programs. 66 of those equate to 71% that are in quartile-one. We have 29 or 21% of them in quartile-two, and the other 8% of our programs are in quartile-three or quartile-four. We haven't been able to look at all of our programs yet as we're just receiving the data. However, we have already been able to look at the number-one on quartile-four there, which is the pavement management, external agency coordination. When we were basically starting our program, we needed more interaction with other communities to make sure that our program, we were putting it in place accurately. We've been able to reduce those costs. I'm gonna take a stab at some of the numbers, but I think it was approximately $15,000 that we had set aside for that. We're able to now reduce that to $7,000 to make sure that we are only reaching out when absolutely necessary now that we have our program underway. And then I just also want to touch on whether the, regardless of which quartile these programs are in, we want to look at each one of those to make sure that we are doing the very best we can, that we're utilizing the lean program, that we're looking at what staff does. As an example, in quartile-one, we have plan review. That's something that we can always look at, how we do business in-house. How do we compare to other agencies? Are we offering the same type of review time as other agencies? You know, what exactly can we do to improve our process so that we're competitive against the other agencies? The key performance measures, I'm gonna start by saying that I somewhat married into these because these performance measures were here when I got here. The one thing, and they're very good, but I want to go even deeper than what we have here. So we'll say we review plans in 20 days or review plans in 15 days on the second one. So my questions are, what does that mean to us? What does that mean compared to other agencies? How do our customers feel about that? Would it be better if we could do it in three weeks instead of four weeks? So these are all questions that we have to ask ourselves. In addition, we have traffic signal service calls that we respond to within 24 hours. I think what's more important to me on that one is we have many traffic service signal calls that we respond to in one hour. Those are the ones that I want to touch on. Those are the ones that are the most meaningful. Those are the ones that affect our public when they're out there. In addition, we have projects completed on schedule. Those are our CIP projects. That's wonderful. That's very important, but I want to go deeper than that. How quickly did we get it done? Where could we have been more efficient? When we have our budget for that, we say within budget. How much within budget? Did we go over? That's okay. There were reasons we went over. I want to really dive into these measures and make sure that what we're providing, not only for us to understand where we can improve, but where we can share with you all how we're really doing our jobs managing these projects.
Joe?
I would just like to add, the estimated cost be within a certain percentage. I don't know what that is, but estimates, I know sometimes when you're, get projects thrown at you, sometimes a little more difficult, but to get them within a reasonable percentage of actual cost would be, I think would be a goal, which is, which would be up there as well.
Bill?
Go ahead.
And absolutely, I appreciate that. And that's where I, if a project is a million dollars, I want to say I was either the project came in a negative 11% or a positive 11%. And I want to provide those reasons why because from each of those encounters, we can learn.
Bill?
On the, I'm not sure the, what I get as a resident or as a council member about the 30-day turnaround on arterial and residential street sweeping. If, and I think it's always been 30 days for as long as I've been in the city. So when we were, you know, when we had 500 road miles, it was 30 days. Well, now I've got almost 1,000 road miles and it's still 30 days. So as a citizen, I witness the sweeper just drives faster. And I'm not sure that we're sweep, that the, it goes faster. Used to drive at three miles an hour, now it drives at 10 miles an hour or 15 miles an hour, so.
The vacuum's not picking up. Is that what you get?
Yeah, that's kind of the point. So I think, you know, again, with the performance measures, we've got to be really careful what it is we're trying to measure and what it is we're trying to do. If I don't see the street sweeper for 35 days, but he does a much better job or she does a much better job, I'm okay with that, and I think the average citizen is too. But it, I, and the irony of it is, when I first ran, that was one of the things that we talked about in the community was the quality. And using that as an example to the citizens, they said, you know, I never really paid attention to it, but now that you mention it, yeah, I do see that there is no junk in the street. And that's really important. So now, and, you know, four years later, they're still talking about the quality of the city, and that drives toward it. So something like that, and I think it's important, you know, you talk about trying to get it deeper. Let's, let's make sure that they are meaningful and that they're actually providing us with something. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Stipp. And I, and I do want to actually touch on that one because I was talking to staff, and I asked the question, why 30 days? Why not 60 days? Again, what do other municipalities do? Is it a PM-10 issue? Are we required to do that? So those are the types of questions that we are going to begin asking each other to make sure that the reasons why we're doing them are the right reasons, and that if 60 days is satisfactory to our customers, then what could that staff be working on? That federally mandated program that we'll touch on in a little bit, but those types of things where we could actually utilize our staff in a different way.
Thank you.
And then let me, for FY15, the efficiencies I wanted to touch upon is traffic management. And we had made a presentation sometime back about the connectivity of our traffic signals. And this is one such program. We had, the program began in 2007 and goes until 2017. We're three of the projects into the overall eight, where we will have connectivity in our major thoroughfares. But this is one such efficiency that our drivers are able to realize.
Yes, they will, and we'll stop getting the complaints. I appreciate that.
Another one is our electronic, we just started a new electronic form online. And what I want to talk about that is, we've been doing electronic plan review and engineering for six to seven years. So this isn't new to the engineering side, but we are always trying to improve, to offer better services. What else? This happens to be a dry utility, so this is for your gas lines or Cox Communications. We never had that electronically, and we've just started that. And so that's a great asset to our customers to be able to submit in that fashion. And so we're constantly evolving and trying to provide better services. Another efficiency is consolidating our dry utility and stormwater inspections under one inspector. We have, currently have a inspector that is temporary, so a contract inspector. We've been able to evaluate how we do business in the field. We have one north inspector, one south inspector, one central inspector, and then an overall inspector. So we're always looking to see, what is the drive time associated with that? How many inspections are they completing in a day? What is their downtime? And so we have just reevaluated how we do business with respect to inspections, and we're able to find an efficiency with that. And then the counter continuum, which I mentioned earlier, about training and cross-training and providing knowledge to that staff so that we can provide the best to our customers each and every time they reach out to us. And then recently, we have been able to, we haven't acquired them yet, but we have two federally funded street sweepers coming our way. And the reason that that's efficiency is because the street sweepers we had were quite old and spent at least 20% of their time in the shop, and so we were unable to maybe meet the 30 days, and maybe it was 35 days. And then supplementals that the engineering department had in FY15, pavement management was our largest one in that, once we are able to complete the work we were doing in spring of 2015, we will have completed 150 square yards of arterial and collector pavement remediation and 670,000 square yards of residential streets. And we've been, it's been a real success for us. And one of our staff members presented to you the other night on those programs that we will be doing here in the springtime. Temporary plans examiner and the plan review overtime, I'll kind of combine those together. It took us approximately two and a half months to bring onboard a contract plans examiner. During that time, we used plan review overtime. We did not utilize all of the supplemental. We were able to stop using that once we were able to get the temporary plans examiner on staff. And then temporary project manager, that's a CIP project manager. At any given time, we have anywhere between 20 and 40 capital programs going on that we're managing. They range in complexity and duration, but we have three full-time project managers in this one temporary, and we were able to utilize this particular project manager because he has a great deal of landscaping background, and he comes to us from the city of Phoenix. He's been working on parks projects, Bullard Wash projects, things of that nature. And the final one I want to touch on is the traffic signal rewire. That has allowed us to be able to replace some of our cabinets, pedestals, old conductors with current standards that are more reliable, instead of having them potentially falter and we would have to replace them in emergency condition, and that would be much more severe for our drivers.
Molly?
I have a question for the city manager. My question is, I was not on council during the downturn. Did we eliminate any plan inspectors or examiners during that time?
Councilmember Campbell, we actually, in 2009, we, there were 27 individuals that were laid off, and most of those were related to the development areas. It could have been plan reviewers, inspectors, planners. And really, that was tied to the just total drop or incredible drop in development. So most of those jobs were actually tied to the development industry back then. So yes, we did lose positions there. I'm not sure how many specifically in planning versus engineering, but it did impact.
Okay, so is that why we are, why we're now using or did use a temporary plans examiner? Because we have not backfilled any of those positions or added those positions back into?
That's correct. And we continue to look at the workload that comes in. And generally, when the workload increases, we also get revenue increases. So the revenue increases will offset that because their permits are paid, revenues come in. And as we go through those cycles where there's a, I'd just say, a huge influx of development that comes through, we do backfill with temporary, temporary or contract labor. And we've done that for a number of years. It's always difficult to determine when to ramp up by hiring a full-time person that we would ask for approval by council. So each year, we go through that, looking at, when do we think it's going to uptick again to where it would require us to ask for an additional position? But generally, when you reach a point of two, three years, three years, you generally will ask for a position if it's a full-time temporary. That's kind of the rule of thumb that we've run with.
Okay, because I would assume that it would be cheaper to hire someone on staff rather than always doing it by contract, and we'll just look and see how it works. Well, it depends on what it is. Review plans are expensive.
Right. You always look at the, the, the cost for outside. But you can also use it for if there's a spike for just a period of months. That's the best to fill with contract. But it's something we look at each and every budget year and throughout the year as well.
Okay, I just wanted the public to know, that's why we were using a temporary examiner is because during the downturn, we did lose employees that were in that department.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Sherry, excuse me.
I think one of the themes, and Bill kind of brought up with the street sweeper, is maybe this is for the InFocus again or the website, but I think it's important that we get the message out there. What does engineering do? Why do you see a street sweeper every 30 days? What's the point here? What, you know, when we're paying for fiber optics, how does that affect the residents? I think we need to get the message out from all of you about why this is important and what is important about this because engineering is very important. Trust me, if the traffic lights don't work, then we hear about it. But I think we need to do a better job about highlighting, some of these positions people don't know about, they say, we have too many employees. You know, that's what you hear, just too many. Well, no, the person that does the street sweeping is very important because then, after your bulk trash is picked up, you know, then there's not litter all over your street or the light. I think we need to do a better job of communicating the importance of how it all works, goes together. Maybe that goes in another page on the InFocus. I don't know. This is gonna be a big magazine.
Well, I know the street sweepers came up with a very important from MAG with PM-10.
Yeah. They did.
That's why we got one of them.
That's really where it's been up to this point. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies.
Well, they got one more. There's the challenge.
Sorry about that. See, I'm gonna take a break after this one before we get to the fire, so.
Okay.
Okay, just so you all know.
Do it quickly.
The development process.
See, I was just in a rush.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, let's go quickly.
It was on the engineering one, yeah.
Yes, so.
Yeah, so.
I got mine.
Can we have the development process slideshow?
You want mine?
When I saw the Goodyear.
We've got it.
When I saw the Goodyear logo, I figured that was it.
Okay, so the next slide that says FY15 challenges and opportunities.
It looks like I got a little wordy here, because mine took one whole slide. So let me go quickly on that, sorry. Yeah, oh, sorry about that.
Just summarize it.
Yes, I will do that. So, one challenge, and this is a challenge, most of these are challenges and opportunities. So this was a challenge that, you know, anywhere in economic development is, how do you promote your city and differentiate yourself from other municipalities? So, we've begun a marketing and branding campaign to enhance recruitment of key industries that are aligned with focus on success, including retail and entertainment. So that is geared for growth, and we'll be talking about that at our event on April 28th. So as, another challenge that we turned into an opportunity is part of the citywide website update. The economic development department created a standalone website, which has had great success, great hits, and really popular, so that's been good. Another challenge for the department was the staffing challenge earlier in the fiscal year, which brought the opportunity to temporarily assign staff to assist the department, which worked really well. And just have to say thank you, you know, to Kim Bradford, who's done, did a wonderful job over there in economic development, really set it up for me nicely, so thank you to her. Another opportunity is something that we talked about too, earlier, is our customer-client management system, really track, you know, our interactions, but also to track how we're doing and our, you know, how their, the interactions are going, but also, you know, how projects are going and whether we're winning them, losing them, and so that we can report better to you all. And then finally, just wanted to make sure and mention the great opportunity that Loop 303 is providing, especially the interchange, something really important to us to market a new corridor for the city. So, just an opportunity for us.
Thank you, Michelle. Again, I'm going to touch on the challenges and opportunities, and similar to what Michelle said, some of these are really dual. So uncertainty in the development community, and that's really both for myself, as well as the two ladies up here with me, is uncertainty. That's a challenge, in that it's, it could either be slow, or it could be super fast, and we're not really prepared to respond to it. But what an opportunity for us. Like Michelle had said, the opening of the 303 and Loop 10 interchange, that's a huge driver for the city. So we're very excited, we've had a lot of attention in that area, and so we're readying ourselves to be able to respond to that. And that goes right along with fluctuations in permits, whether it's building or engineering permits. We need to be able to respond to our customers' needs as quickly as possible. And so we're always looking at our processes to make sure that we're able to very quickly maneuver to respond to them in a positive way. Stormwater management program, that is really, it's sort of housed in engineering, but it's a federal mandate that affects all of us. And we in engineering have reached out to the other departments to work with them on not only marketing, but being aware of what our requirements are, and what types of things are embedded within our program, and how we must annually report on this, and how we're making sure that we're adhering to our program that we put together. ERP implementation, again, it's a challenge in the short term, but what a wonderful opportunity for us as a city to go to this system, to where we're all being able to be linked together. And then recently, we had the larger storms in September and October, and that was very much a challenge for engineering, because we needed to be able to respond to those. We utilized staff to be able to go out and make quick repairs to some of the items. But then also, we're able to work with the city manager's office to ensure that we were able to hire some contractors to come out and do the things that we were unable to do and didn't have equipment to handle.
And finally, you can see that Development Services identified the development review process. And again, this is one of the main reasons that the three of us wanted to come up here to present together, is that, you know, that really is one of our biggest opportunities and challenges. You know, Michelle spoke about all the economic development opportunities and challenges, and we know that that's one of the biggest focuses of our residents and of city council, is to meet these economic development goals. We hear it again and again, we want retail, we want entertainment, we want jobs. And so then that becomes, Rebecca's and my job is, how do we support that? How do we ensure there's this development review process, that when economic development are feeding projects in, it's really smooth? And so that becomes a challenge for us, but it's also this amazing opportunity for us to build the best development review process in Phoenix and in the nation, and to build that reputation, so it makes Michelle's job that much easier. And we do use the development review process as an incentive. We've done that right now with Project Seattle. So, you know, when we do have a well-oiled machine, we can use that as an incentive. And so we realized, we've never really taken the time to describe this process. So we don't want to take too much time, but we just wanted to take a moment to make sure, even though we're three departments, one of the major things we all support is this development review process, and it's one process. It doesn't stop. To our customer, they don't see what department they're with. So, like I said, we just want to take a few minutes and describe the process for you a little bit.
Sure. So I'll just start with the non-residential development process, just with recruitment. And that is, you know, what we do in economic development, and going through the pre-application meeting entitlement, and I'll let you talk about that in terms of, but recruitment, really, the important part about that is that any chink in the process really hurts our ability to do the recruitment. So, you know, when, if there's ever anything that happens through the development process, then we have to go back and take time off recruitment, so that we can deal with that. So that's one of those things that hurts recruitment, too. So just, you know, wanting to kind of highlight that point.
So then a business will come in for a pre-application meeting. And many of them come in through our economic development contacts, either through recruitment or small business recruitment. And many of them come into the pre-application meeting all on their own, they've contacted the city on their own. And so that pre-application meeting is the time for staff to meet with the applicant, to try and assist them through the process, figure out exactly what needs to be done. The first step, they may need entitlement, which means they may need to rezone the property, a use permit or special use permit. Not every project will require that, but that's our first question we're asking. If they have that, then they can move on to their site plan. And that's, you know, and I should mention, through these processes, Development Services is taking the lead at this point, but we're certainly, every single one of these departments is there every step of the way, we're all part of the process. Then once we have a site plan approved, then it can move on to the building and engineering concurrently. And I'll talk just a moment on the building side. It would go to our construction plan review for building plans, and then building inspections. But at the same time, it's going through engineering.
Thank you, Katie. And that's absolutely true. So when you have, once you get that site plan approval, then you have the go-ahead to, for, to have your engineer or architect put together those final documents that you're actually going to be permitting off of it. And those then, at the same time, come into our building department and our engineering department, and are, run through the process to make sure that they meet all of the codes and requirements. It can take two reviews, it could take up to three to get that final approval, and where we're able to finally issue those permits. They must run hand-in-hand, because you might get to the end of a project, and the building is approved, but the grading or the engineering's not yet approved. That doesn't do our customer any good unless we are running and helping them through the process, so that they end at the same time, so that we're able to issue those permits on behalf of them. And then the inspection side is, once we get out in the field, we're there, working with those customers hand-in-hand, to make sure that they're achieving the best product in that final C of O. And this is where, I'm going to steal this from economic development, they say, "Our development continuum is from hello to C of O." And again, keep that in mind, we are always aware of each other and what we're doing, because if one piece of that isn't perfect, it doesn't matter how good the rest of it is. Because to our customer, we're the city of Goodyear.
And on the residential side, it's a very similar process. It's just, rather than a site plan, we're looking at plaits. And then, of course, because we look at the subdivision at all at one with engineering, but individual buildings for the homes, some of that is slightly different. But overall, it's the same process.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Joanne?
Well, I have to say, this is wonderful to my ears, because, you know, going through planning and zoning, and all these years on council, I mean, we all know that the silo effect that was occurring was a real problem with ECH Dev and planning and zoning and everything with development. And so then, when, tried to bring in all of them together, and try to fix it that way, no more silos, and then that was having its own challenges. But to have the three of you at the table together, you know, discussing this together, relieves me of my fears that it was going to go back to the silo system. And so, you know, I really appreciate that you guys really are on the same page and understand this process. And, you know, I'm very, very happy, and I hope it continues to get better. And I hope that, you know, the people that I hear in the back of my own issues are saying, "What about the city's plan review? What about the," you know, and I have to reassure them, things are better. And so, you know, I'm glad that you're going to be able to prove it to everybody. Thank you very much.
That was a great presentation. I'm going to talk first here, for a change here. I really appreciate it. And through the years since I've been on council, 2005, and I have sat at those tables, and for about, I think I've, at least five or six times, I sat around the table and watched this process, and saw a breakdown and weakness, that when the client left, they really weren't sure what they had to do. And so I really feel assured now that that's not going to happen, and so that we won't have misinformation or lateness on many of these applications and different things they have to turn in. And I think it's important that they understand the process, so that they are able to, in many cases, dialogue with their architect, and their different contractors that they're using, and that they know whose responsibility it is on each of these items. So I, thank you. Sorry, Joe, for jumping in.
That's okay. Again, I appreciate, I'm a firm believer, we've got to be the city of choice. So whatever we do, if we don't grow our base, and grow our businesses, either through economic development or whatever you're bringing, but what I also think is critical, too, and again, I appreciate you all working together and coming up with how this work, is that we come up with some type of a customer satisfaction survey, that we get true, accurate data, so you're receiving real-time feedback of the process, to make sure it's doing what you want it to do. And if it's got to be tweaked, it tweaks, if not, so, but keep that up. I mean, I always tell my students, the thing I really like about now, is service everywhere now. It's very competitive. When I take my car in for service, sometimes I will get a call from the actual manufacturer, not the dealer. And the manufacturer's calling me, asking me, "How was the dealer? How was your service? How were you treated?" Because that's the key. You know, those that provide the excellent customer service, the ones that survive, the ones that don't die. So I think it's important that we receive that timely feedback, to ensure it's doing exactly what you're doing. But we appreciate the effort, and I appreciate you all working together, because this is our survival up here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay, we're going to take a short break here, before we ask the fire department and Parks and Recreation to come up. So let's take a quick break.
Yes.
And Chief Paul Luizy will present the fire department budget. Chief?
Good evening.
Great evening.
Try to keep the energy going tonight.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right.
Start a fire.
Keep us warm. All right, so here's our organizational structure. Total FTEs, 102, $13.2 million budget. Within that budget, what's interesting to note, for us at least, is 86% of that is personnel costs. So here's our breakdown from all of our five divisions that are direct reports to me. We have admin services, fire prevention, emergency operations, that is our response out to the communities for the 911 calls. That's our largest division, obviously. Sports services, homeland security, and then our one-time supplementals. To note, for this year, we implemented our electronic patient care reporting system. That was done, though, through a grant through the Hila Indian Tribe. We received the third fire engine delivery, that was in late fall, early winter. We were also able to hire a new fire inspector. For the first time, we've had a medical director on a contract with us for the city, which is great to have. Overhauled our entire policies, put it on a brand-new schedule that we have, so all the critical ones are reviewed every year, and then subsequently up to three years on a review cycle. So we're right in the middle of that. We have a large majority of those policies finished. And then obviously, the, some of the monies that council approved for us last year was the purchase of the thermal imaging cameras, so we were able to overhaul all of our, all of our old technology that we had, and been able to upgrade those with the supplemental from last year. Currently, we have four open positions, we're projecting that to move to five with another retirement that could be happening in May. Those, the recruitment has been closed, and we'll start interviews on Monday of next week. That's moving forward. Priority-based budgeting, we're a little different than some of the other departments that you've seen tonight. We have 105 programs broken amongst our four quartiles. Quartile one, we have eight programs there, which represent the small 2%. Quartile two is made up of 32 programs, and 58% of our priority-based budgeting dollars. And then there is the Wildland Response, our UAWC hazmat grant, which pays for our hazmat vehicles. And that's a sustainment amount that we get every year, to the tune of about $54,000. It also pays for the training for our hazmat technicians, for the new technicians, for the 200-hour program. Quartile threes, we have 33 programs in there, a lot of the company training, medical records, reporting, our PPE care and maintenance fall into that. And then lastly, quartile four, is our EMS training, quality assurance, annual hose testing, and our daily staffing with the telestaff. So again, makes up of all of our 105 programs that we have in the fire department.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Volly? Okay, I have a question, Chief, if you don't mind. For quartile four, you have EMS training?
Yes.
Why is that not a one, since all of your firemen have to be in EMS?
It doesn't have a lot of economic impact for the city. So a lot of the programs that are in four, for us, the way they're scored, there are a lot of those are inward-looking, inward-supporting programs, such as EMS training and certification. So while it does have a huge impact on the safety of our citizens, not so much on drawing businesses, like Michelle and Development Services and Economic Development do.
Okay.
Cheryl Lynn?
I just kind of wanted to make a comment, and I think that's something we have to be very aware of, that just because something is in a three or four, does not mean it's not very, very important. It just doesn't fit the criteria to get the points, because of the weighting of some of it. So we have to be very cognizant about as we're looking at these programs.
You cut yourself off.
Yeah.
I think we heard you, that's very good.
There you are.
Thank you. Can you control yourself there? Go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. Next are our key performance measures, and so we'll just pull out a few of those that we have. Occupancies inspected. And obviously, with the redevelopment of our fire prevention program, we hope to see those numbers increase. And so last year, in April, we got our volunteer FPAP program up and running. And between April and December, they helped with 1,000 inspections that we've had out there. So they've really shown a dramatic improvement for our inspection numbers. And so you'll see our target for next year up there at 1,200, as opposed to the 1,000 for our goal in '14. Continue to the room of origin, that's where, when we have a house fire, how successful we are continuing that at the room of origin, where it started. And we've had 100% success rate with that. That lends to what council does to help support the fire department to be able to provide that. That does have an economic impact on the city, because obviously, the more homes that have damage to them from house fires, that's more blight in the city. have damage to them from house fires, uh, that's more blight in the city. So we're certainly, um, thankful for the support that council continues to give us. Uh, community education, kids, uh, reached... How'd that change? Sorry. I don't really mean to be doing that. Okay. That's probably Eddie. He's always said he'd get back at me. Uh, kids reached educational programs, uh, so, uh, last year, ten thousand nine hundred and fourteen, um, kids that we've been able to reach through our outreach educational programs. And again, that's really done with, uh, two, one full-time, one part-time, and then, uh, two of our volunteers. So we've been very fortunate to be able to reach that many children. Our average priority-one travel times is at five minutes and four seconds, and you can see that, that dataset is, uh, much better than what we've had in the past. This is much more consistent with our break-to-break concept. Uh, that's rolled out and, and done very well. And then lastly, you'll see our, uh, quality assurance for EMS records. Now, that's well below where we wanna be. However, implementing the EP, uh, CER system, we've been going very slowly, making sure that we're getting all of the concepts down and all of the measures that we do wanna measure. And we've been working regionally on, uh, benchmarks that we want to measure. So, uh, right now, um, really only about six months into our new system, we're at about sixty-two percent. W- within that is an interesting number, um, there is a, a state-required number that we report on, and that represents, represents about twenty percent of our calls. So those are the most critical patients that we see, and we're a hundred percent compliant with those. Uh, so we're, we're building this as, as we go in our EP, uh, CER system, and we look forward to, uh, increasing that number in the, in the year to come.
Joanne? Oh, um, and I'm sorry, I do not remember what the name of the report was, but when the fire department had the full, um, research report done on it, um...
Citigate?
I'm sorry?
The Citigate audit?
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so if you were to go back to that, and all the, the key points they had pointed out, and the things that you've changed over time, um, would you glean some, maybe some better, uh, performance measurements from that report that maybe you could be tackling?
Yeah, and, and actually, we'll be looking at that going into next year to see which ones we'd like to add or, or possibly change. Um, we certainly, like council member Stip was saying earlier, just don't wanna count to count. We wanna make a difference and make sure that we are moving forward. We're also using our accreditation model as we start to move forward to that, to look for some benchmarks as well. So yeah, absolutely. So efficiencies, uh, as I spoke about the new policy review process, that was a large undertaking that we've, we've done. Um, and we've had success with that, and we continue to, uh, strive to be more successful with our policy review process. But we feel very solid with the foundation that we've constructed now on that, and as we begin to move forward, we feel that we're in a good spot to have a more regular review of our policies. During some of the policy review, we found, we found some that were, uh, from the, from the early nineties, so, that had not been reviewed. Uh, captains' meetings, we're meeting with our captains on a quarterly basis, so we get all twenty-three of our captains in the same room, uh, and they hear the same message, uh, from the leaderships in the department. Obviously, with fire prevention, uh... I love this program. Obviously, with fire prevention and fire investigations, we've had, uh, huge increases in our efficiencies within these, uh, two divisions, large in part to, uh, the folks that we have working in there now, uh, headed up by, uh, Captain Ron Lilly, and also with our FPAPs. Uh, our volunteers have been, uh, just great for us. They've been with us now for a full year and have, uh, helped increase our efficiencies. And then lastly, our fire investigations. So now with, with seven, it's going on its own now. This is really cool. Uh, now with seven, um, with seven investigators available, um, we found to be much more efficient, and we're also working a lot close, more closely with the police department. Um, and, and they've been, uh, awesome, allowing us to use, uh, two of their detectives on a more regular basis. So it's much more consistent with us.
Mayor Manning?
Yes, Wally.
Chief, um, for your fire investigations, are they actually arson investigators?
Yes, yes.
And certified as arson investigators?
Yeah, so they take a, it's a four-part, uh, program that they go through, and, uh, yes, all seven of those, I have gone through the, the four.
Okay, and have they been, are they now sworn officers as well?
No, they're not AZ post-certified. That's where we're using the police, uh, for, and that, that partnership's been phenomenal.
So if we get, uh, a fire that we think that we need the police, that's when we borrow one of their officers to go with our inspector?
Correct.
Okay, very good.
Yep.
Thanks.
Joanne? A question, and maybe I should ask this with the performance measures. In the past, we would receive data of outcomes, um, kind of like, um, how many patients, uh, had heart issues that had, uh, good outcomes?
Yeah.
Or stroke patients that had good, uh, you know, it was back to, back to Bill's point of five minutes isn't five minutes. Who cares if you're not doing the job when you get there correctly?
Right.
So, um, are you still measuring those types of outcomes? Because I know in the past, they were, and they were, um, critical in, in understanding how great of a department we have in, in doing some of those, um, emergency operations.
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, we're actually working very closely with, um, West Valley Hospital to make sure that we are getting that feedback on a more regular basis, and they've had some changes in their ED leadership and also their cardiac cath lab leadership, and, um, it has been, um, better lately that we're getting feedback on our patients. So we continue to work with them, uh, to make sure that we are getting that, that timely feedback.
I see. So some of that, those outcomes are more based, not on just what you've know and did, but it's also what they have to get back?
Getting the information back from the hospital.
I see.
Yeah. Yep. But we are tracking benchmarks internally. Uh, you know, for instance, on our standing patients, how fast do we get a twelve-week E, twelve-week EKG? How fast do we transmit it to the hospital? How fast do we get to the patients at the hospital? So we're tracking that information internally. Okay, so our supplementals for FY fifteen, um, so we had a, a PPE replacement, which has been completed. Thermal imaging cameras have been purchased and completed.
What's a PPE?
I'm sorry. Uh, personal protective equipment, and so it's their turnout gear that they wear.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, wildland shelters, we were actually able to receive a grant through APS and Firehouse Subs for this. Uh, so we've been able to offset that, that money, uh, and we're able to see, receive that money, uh, that, that, those fundings through APS and Firehouse Subs. So, um, in the coming weeks, we hope to come to, uh, council with Firehouse Subs and APS and be able to do kind of a joint presentation on that. Uh, traffic safety vests, uh, we've, uh, completed that purchase. Um, replacement of the hose and equipment, uh, for the new engine has been completed. Fire prevention training is in progress. Uh, the additional equipment has been, uh, completed as well. The medical director contract has been completed, and our IGA with, uh, Maricopa County Emergency Management has been completed. And then the SCBA, uh, the self-contained breathing apparatus replacement program is a three-year, four-year program now, uh, and the finance department, that we've been working with them on putting aside three hundred thousand a year for that, uh, to hopefully get our one million dollars at the end of the, the four years, uh, to be able to purchase, uh, those all at once. So make sure we have the same technology.
And, uh, so what exactly is this medical director?
So, uh, we, uh, went under contract with, uh, Dr. Bradley. She's, uh, emergency room physician that works over at Banner Thunderbird, which is our base hospital. And, uh, she comes in on a, uh, on a monthly basis and meets with, uh, the EMS battalion chief and also the EMS captain. She reviews all of the records, uh, that fall into the, the critical nature. So cardiac arrest, strokes, uh, uh, MIs, and all trauma patients get reviewed by her personally, and then anything else that she wants to pull. So if she wants to pull intubations, IV starts, uh, all those charts will be pulled for her. She'll review all those high liability calls for us. Uh, she'll also provide, uh, education, uh, for our paramedics on a monthly basis as well, through, um, our CE program, or she'll come in on a, almost, uh, every quarterly basis for our paramedic refreshers and teach a few hours there. So, um, and she's also been representing us at regional meetings and statewide meetings and helping with, um, protocol development as well, so, for us.
So besides being a best practice, is this also a mandate, or is this just something?
No, it's, it's a, it's a best practice for, for agencies to be able to do this. Yep.
Is this part of the accreditation?
Uh, it will, I think it will be something that they look at down the road, um, but we've wanted to go under contract with her for, for a couple of years now, um, and, and last year, we were able to receive the funding through, uh, supplemental, and, uh, it's, you know, it's been a great partnership with her, so...
So rather than being an employee, it's just something easy?
Yeah, it's a lot cheaper, too.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Hello?
Chief, so you mentioned that, um, Banner Estrella is our base hospital, not West Valley?
Banner, Banner Thunderbird.
Um, isn't it a little unusual that we don't have the hospital located in our community as our base hospital?
It is, um, and, and, and actually, about, uh, eight years ago, when I started here, that was one of my objectives, to, to review, um, that, uh, agreement that we had with, uh, Banner Thunderbird and, uh, consider moving over to West Valley. Over the last, uh, eight years, uh, West Valley has gone through a number of leadership changes, and including their ED, uh, leadership has changed multiple times, um, and without any consistency. Uh, recently, with, with Stan Holm being there for the last two years, that's some of the things that he and I have been talking about on a, on a more regular basis. Uh, we would certainly like to explore that in the future. Uh, the one thing that Banner Thunderbird has done for us is provide a consistent medical director and also consistent, uh, staffing for us through the pre-hospital coordinator, which is a nurse located inside, uh, Banner Thunderbird. Um, and they've always been there, uh, for the Good Year Fire Department, and they've been a great partner. While it is interesting and unique that we are so separated, um, they have been very committed to the Good Year Fire Department.
What is the cost of the medical director position?
Uh, it's a ten thousand dollars a, a year that we pay her, so then she bills us on a monthly basis.
Sherri?
Says, "I don't know what the home hospital means." Could you explain that? I, I don't understand what that means.
No.
Base hospital?
Uh, base hospital.
Yeah, what does that mean?
So, the, the base hospital is, uh, state-required for us to be able to call into a on-duty emergency room physician, uh, to be able to get orders for our paramedics to provide care to our patients. Now, a lot of our orders, uh, have been moved to, uh, offline. All of our protocols have been moved offline, so when we do talk to our physician, it's, uh, it's much less now, so it's a more critical nature when we have to talk to our physician. Um, so, you know, that's available to us twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Uh, so all of, any paramedic service in Arizona has to have a base hospital agreement. So, again, our, ours has always been with Banner Thunderbird.
But you can still transport to West Valley?
Oh, absolutely.
If they're close to the zone. So that doesn't mean that that's where the people have to go or anything?
Correct. Even the hospitals all agree and, and sign off on all of our protocols that we use. So the, the West Valley has a very consistent set of protocols that we use for all of our hospitals, regardless of where we transport the patient to. It's the same set of protocols.
And, and I just wanted to make another comment. Um, I, I wanna thank you for the work you've done in the schools. I think twelve thousand children, that's a pretty good chunk of the children that attend our schools that you guys have hit, and that's, that's, that's excellent, especially with a lot of volunteer work. And I also wanna thank you and, and both the police chief do a, a great job about letting us know when there's incidents out there, because that's the first way that you start getting your phone lit up, is like, the neighbors say, "What's going on?" So I do appreciate that, so thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Wally.
Um, I would appreciate it, Chief, if you would continue to look in to move the home base back to West Valley. I just think, um, it makes no sense to me that we're halfway across Phoenix and Glendale and wherever Banner Thunderbird is. Is it Thunderbird and, what, Fifty-first Ave or something? It's way over there.
UG, yeah.
Yeah, it's way over there. And, um, now that, uh, West Valley is certified as a trauma-one...
Yep.
...center, I think, um, the confidence level should be there, that we ought to be able to use that as our base and operate out of there.
Okay.
And they can certainly provide us with a medical director as well, or whatever.
They've changed a great deal.
Yeah, and, and I, I think we need to take a look at it.
And, uh, and, uh, and, uh, I see nothing but upward trends to improving the hospital and their reputation, and they work very hard, and I think that this would be a good time to, to begin looking into it at least. I can understand your, uh, wanting to stay with the same one, and they've been good partners to you, and so it makes it very difficult, uh, but it would, would be nice to use our hometown hospital. Cheryl Lynn?
But I think we have to, to realize that we aren't moving it back. I suspect the base hospital has never been at West Valley Hospital, has it?
Uh, not that I'm aware of, no. It's always been at Banner Thunderbird.
What I'm saying is, it's not like we were there and we moved away and we would've come...
It sounded like you didn't go there because of, I mean...
No, I think it's that we're, not, not to argue the point, but I mean, if someone is providing good service to you, consistent service to you, um, you almost need a reason to move, 'cause you don't know what you're getting into. I'm, I'm not defend...
It's, it's just that hometown would be nice if it could. If it can, it's fine.
Right. I'm just saying that it's not like we were there and moved away and they need to come back, 'cause I don't think we were ever there.
Well, I think that the conversations are important, and obviously, the history, uh, is understandable, and there's been a major change, and I think that we all feel positive about that. So thank you for starting that, that dialogue.
Yeah, and, and Stan has done a tremendous job over there.
I agree.
A lot of change.
Thank you.
Uh, some challenges and some opportunities. Um, we've, we have a new training requirement from the state, which is a challenge, unfunded mandate, uh, to increase the amount of, uh, training hours that the EMTs have to have, uh, for their refresher. We, we, um, we anticipated that this was coming, we just didn't anticipate that it was coming so soon, so we had to make some, uh, some changes to our budget for this year to, um, get that going, get that started. Uh, we hope to finish the, the training requirements by, by next year.
Joanne? Is this something, be, since this is obviously across the state, is this something that you partner with our other close neighbor cities that you can all, you know, share the resources and hopefully, you know, especially since you said it's unmandated, or unfunded, I'm sorry?
Yeah, yes, yeah, we, we, uh, we looked, uh, City of Buckeye to help us with, with setting up the program, 'cause they had already started, uh, working on the development of that program. And, um, we actually tapped one of our own, uh, firefighters, who actually is a, a nurse as well, Sean Miller, to kinda come in and help us, uh, start that program from, from scratch, really, and he's done a tremendous job with that, getting everybody on board, so...
Wally? What is the new requirement?
It, it's an hour increase. It, you know, it, it went, uh, from, uh, hours that they had before, from, you could do your refresher in eight hours, now it's a mandatory twenty-four hours in the seat, so it's increased, um, you know, by that much.
One entire shift?
Yeah.
And why, why was it?
So, over three, over three days, we do it, though. You know, eight, three, three eight-hour days.
And, and why was this? Were they having a problem with...
The, the state went over to, uh, national, um, standards. Yeah, and, and so that was part of the adoption when they, when they changed that, that standard.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, we can do this more than, in more than just three eight-hour days in class, though, right? We've got two years to get to twenty-four hours, the way I understand it.
Yeah, so we, we've broken down our, um, our EMTs into smaller usable, you know, more usable groups that we can get into, uh, in, in front of us for training, so we've, we were spreading that out over the two years, yes.
So, yeah, we don't, it, it's not a, uh, it's not a true refresher class anymore, where you had to spend all that time in the classroom? You can do it two hours a month for...
Yes, yep. Going forward, we can...
Ten months?
Yeah, going forward, we can do that, yes.
So how do, how do you see that change being a challenge or an opportunity going forward?
It was a challenge to us for this budget year. Going forward, now, we feel like we have a better handle on it. We're more prepared for it. We'll be planning it out a little bit more on a regular basis. So we feel like we have that piece under control.
Okay.
It was just the suddenness of it for this year.
It won't have as big a budget impact going forward as it has on this particular year?
Correct. Correct. Workforce development, and this is kind of interesting to look at. And this is both, I guess, a challenge and an opportunity for us. Our B.C. and deputy roles, 44% of those are new to us this year. So whether they've been promoted internally from a captain up to a battalion chief, or whether we've hired externally, we just hired Tim Wayne from Glendale to come over to be a deputy fire chief for us. And he's taken Mike Ullman's spot, who retired after 27 years. So those leadership development opportunities are great for us. And those are exciting opportunities and a challenge for us as well. Technology changes as well is some opportunity and could potentially be a challenge, because with technology, you never know. New EPCR system, downstreaming the telestaff to the new SAP for payroll, upgrades to telestaff for next year. And then also looking at business intelligence software for the fire department. So we're trying, we're trialing that right now until July with a company called VineLight. And we look to pull even more of our data out of our data sets right now, so. Continuing to improve on fire prevention division, which is certainly an opportunity for us to continue to improve. Our focus, again, with fire prevention is to provide a high-level customer service, to educate, and then at the last, you know, effort to enforce what the codes and bylaws are for fire prevention. And then obviously, they are increasing calls for service, both an opportunity and a challenge for us going forward.
So what is that percent?
We're going anywhere about 6% to 7% per year, increasing hall volume.
And for Litchfield?
Litchfield stayed pretty steady for the most part. We average about 40 calls, 45 calls there a month. So they're right around 500 calls a year for us. It's not a dramatic increase for them. That's my last slide. So any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
So let's bring up Parks and Recreation, Director Nathan Torres. And team.
Gang's all here.
Oh, I thought they were going to sit beside you, but they came to the front row. Okay.
Mayor and Council, my pleasure to present tonight to you on one of my favorite subjects, Parks and Recreation. Parks and Recreation. There you go. So here's our organizational structure. We have 51 staff members. Our leadership team is with us tonight. Bruce Kessman, Ballpark General Manager, Jeremy Figueroa, our park superintendent, David Sider, Recreation Superintendent, Scott Dobbins, who left. He was a bit tired after working, you know, 40-some days straight during spring training. So we let him out a little early. And of course, we have Diana Vazquez, who's our management assistant. And I can tell you that our leadership team and all 51 members of our staff are very committed to enhancing the quality of life for our residents, as well as building community, primarily through the core services that we offer. Ballpark, Parks and Recreation, Parks Maintenance, Right-Away Maintenance, and Arts and Culture. Total budget's about $9.5 million. In addition to the 51 full-time staff, we are also heavy consumers of part-time hours. We utilize part-timers for efficiency purposes. They're our rec leaders. They are our lifeguards. They are, you know, assisting us with maintenance, both in the parks and at the ballpark. So 34 full-time equivalents, in addition to the 51 full-time staff. And just some quick highlights. You heard it here first. This year, we broke a record for spring training. More than 150,000 people attended spring training this year. That is a record for us here in Goodyear. 80 events, 700-plus use days take place at the ballpark. Those two items generate $57 million in economic impact. And that was identified in the two independent studies. One commissioned by, or actually performed by FMR Associates, as well as Elliot Pollack. Parks maintains 794 acres. 794 acres. Nearly 500 program offerings. 32,000 program participants. In addition to the 25,000 pool visits to our own Loma Linda. 125 programs in our portfolio. I'm going to review various quartile programs quickly. Quartile 1 covers about 8% of our budget. $686,000, and that's comprised of 11 programs. Some of the programs that exist in Quartile 1 are litter and custodial maintenance, amenity maintenance, so the maintenance that we're performing on playgrounds, Ramadas, drinking fountains. Quartile 2 is really where a lion's share of our work is performed. This totals $4.9 million, equates 60% of our budget, and roughly 76 programs. Some of the highlights here are the right-of-way maintenance, the parks maintenance. That's all of your landscape and horticultural practices. This is where our rec programs live. So all of our rec program offerings, our major special events, marketing and branding for the ballpark. So how are we attracting people to spring training? That would be a Quartile 2 program. And Quartile 3, $2.5 million is allocated to Quartile 3 programs. That's 30% of our budget, and that's comprised of 34 programs. And the way I can best explain Quartile 3 programs is they primarily are supporting our Quartile 2 programs. So you'll see things in there, such as utilities. We have a program that identifies our utility payments. That's within the Parks and Right-of-Way, that's $1.2 million. So that's almost half of our Quartile 3 programs. Irrigation maintenance, fertilization, chemical application, things that ultimately impact our Quartile 2 maintenance practices. And then we get to Quartile 4, which is represented 2% of our budget, roughly $130,000, and that's four programs. The key programs in Quartile 4 are player transportation. What that is, is we're contractually obligated to transport the major league players for spring training from their development complexes up to the stadium daily. We also have a safety program in there for the ballpark. And then just more administrative, we have two other programs that are primarily administrative in staff time. One is the spring training settlement process. That's 0.15 or 15% of an FTE that's dedicated to that, as well as management of the team use agreements. It's about 10% of a full-time equivalent. So that is our share of, a brief summary of our quartile programs.
Mayor? Joe?
Just a general question. Do you have any idea on the right-of-way? You know, we go ahead and contract out with Perryville. What are the savings if we would do that ourselves?
Good question. We, on average, the cost is about five cents per maintenance for, in our right-of-ways. That's how much we're paying now.
Right.
I can tell you that, you know, right now, we have, we've just added another right-of-way crew. So we have three right-of-way crews that are Perryville inmate crews. We pay one full-timer, you know, one full-time person to lead a crew of nine inmates. The inmates make 50 cents an hour. And so the comparison, and I don't have an exact number for you, council member, but it's significant to continue to utilize our inmate program.
I'm sure it is. I was just curious. By doing that, we save quite a bit of money. And I was just curious, what is that amount? Because I'm sure it's a lot.
I can't quantify that for you today with the dollar number. But, you know, if we're looking at it in terms of staff time, you know...
If I could just get a rough estimate, maybe for the manager. I mean, to me, that's one of those efficiencies that I think you tout yourself on going outside the norm of contracting, because I can imagine that is a sizable amount of money if we were actually doing ourselves versus contracting with a Perryville. So it'd be nice to know what that number is.
Yeah, and I think just some of the data that we were reviewing prior to tonight, you know, it's almost four times as much to...
I suspect it's more than that, but that's fine. We can get that.
Mayor?
Yes? No, no, I was telling you, you wanted to speak, Sherri, sorry.
And with the ballpark, also, the water savings, that's not built into this graph, though, right?
That is not part of this quartile program.
It's more of a savings on that for the utilities. Without going into the utilities, then? Was that where the water would go?
This utilities actually doesn't include the ballpark. This is just in the Parks and Right-of-Way that I was highlighting here.
Okay, but so that's some additional savings that isn't in this presentation?
Correct.
Okay.
Dorian?
So, Nathan, plant replacement, plant. You know, it's come up a couple of times, back into efficiencies, having, you know, drought-tolerant plants. I know Joe's mentioned it, and we've talked about it over the years. And I know we still don't have a policy to take care of plant replacement. I would think that as part of an efficiency is to get that on board, because if we don't, and we're having to go back again and say, "Oh, we need, you know, $4 million," whatever, I'm just throwing that number out in the air. But, you know, to have to replace everything again, rather than staying on top of it in efficient manner...
You are exactly...
Are you working on that?
Yes, yes, we are, council member. And you're exactly correct. It's my understanding that we, at one point, had replacement dollars within our current budgets. And through budget reduction over the past years, that was eliminated. And so we have been addressing that via supplemental and capital dollars. And our staff has really worked hard with putting together an asset replacement program that includes plants and trees and shrubs. And so I'm happy to say we're on the right track for identifying what those needs are.
In an efficient manner?
In an efficient manner.
Okay.
Some of our key performance measures, why are we measuring what we're measuring? Simply put, because what gets measured, gets done. As quoted by my city manager.
Very good.
They could buy us quickly?
He went like this. Brian, he was looking right at you, man. Okay.
The, some of the key ones, percent of out-of-town visitors that are coming to spring training. And our target is 60%. Why is that important to us? Because that really drives our economic impact number. And so the more that we can increase visitation to our city, the average day is 5.9 nights. And so these are folks that are filling hotels and filling restaurants during spring. So it's important for us to track that. Some of the things we do to influence that, of course, we produce the visitor's guide. We participate with the Cactus League promotions, promotions also in Ohio. And we also utilize a great deal of Prop 302 funding that's for these efforts. Another key performance measure is ensuring that our parks are earning a 90% or higher standard of care. And this is really influenced by two factors. One, it's influenced by the staff that are on the ground doing the work. The second factor is the assets that are in the park that are causing that score to either not raise to the level of 90% or fall below. But that's important for us to, it's a good tool for us to gauge where our parks are at and how they're performing for our public. One that has been of interest lately is we talk about the weeds in the right-of-way and what we're doing there. And our goal here is to get three cycles each year in all areas of the right-of-way. Last year, we were at 2.4, and we did add an additional inmate crew last year. And so our goal is to achieve three rotations per year. Capacity of programs offered. This helps us ensure that our programs are in line with demand of our residents. For example, if we are offering adult trips for our adult active community, and they're at half-capacity or 30% of capacity, perhaps we need to rotate our crops internally and evaluate whether that program is performing or if it's needed. Whereas if, you know, like a BUNCO program that's at 88, 90, 99% capacity, then we know that that's a program that's desired for our community. So that's an important measure for us as well.
Dorian?
What, how do you measure, first of all, I would assume you have, in fact, I know you do, you have a marketing budget for the ballpark, correct? And what is that percent? What is the marketing dollar percent to your budget for the ballpark?
It is, percent-wise, I'd have to figure that out for you. I can tell you, that program, roughly about $130,000 for marketing.
Do you measure, then, by your marketing dollars to your outcomes of ticket sales? Or to, I mean, I know you're showing percent of out-of-town spring training attendees. So are you being, are you measuring what marketing dollars are being based on out-of-town marketing compared to just in-town marketing? And looking at any of that?
We do...
Do you need more for your marketing budget?
Well, that's a great question. We do. You know, the out-of-town visitors are where we measure the economic impact. So from that standpoint, it's tracked separately. For our local marketing, we track by way of ticket promotions and redemptions. So if we have an ad, we're asking people where they're getting their information, how they heard about the game, or things like that. In terms of having enough resources for marketing, I guess my response would be that we've just had our record-breaking year.
Right.
And we need to continue to grow that. And so, you know, we need some time to digest that information. We don't have all the information yet, all the data from who our ticket purchasers are this season, where they came from, how many tickets they each bought, when they purchased. So we need to delve in that a little closer. But, you know, I think in terms of resources, our marketing dollars are adequate for right now.
Well, and I ask you that as, is obviously of interest, but also, you know, as we look at the Prop 302 dollars that we fight for, for marketing, and how that all aligns out together. So that's why I'm... But that's why I ask you these questions. How you're measuring where it's coming out.
That's why we're able to go to Cleveland.
That's right.
So, okay, thank you.
Joe?
Just for clarification, is out-of-town out-of-state?
Out of the area. So it could be out of the Maricopa County area. And this is the Cactus League measure of where someone would have to travel and stay. It's not like an overnight or same-day trip.
So outside of Maricopa County?
Correct.
You can't steal from, well, that's Prop 302 rules, not your own marketing dollars is your own.
And the, it's probably important to note also that this year, the Cactus League commissioned a new economic impact study. And so we'll be receiving the results back in the next several months from that. In terms of efficiencies, volunteers, volunteers, volunteers. We are a heavy user of volunteers, and quite frankly, they are the backbone to what we do, whether it's coaching youth sports for us, or ballpark volunteering, you know, as an usher. We have a great intern program as well. Nearly 10,000 hours and 185,000 in savings annually. Someone mentioned, actually, the remediated water line as an efficiency for us. And by the hard work of Mark Holmes and able to deliver remediated water source to the ballpark is an efficiency that we hope, we will realize some savings from that. So we're excited about that. One of the things I'm most proud of, of staff, and specifically Jeremy and his team, is they've developed a park audit system. We've talked a little bit tonight about it, that really links the park audit system to the operation plans, which then links to employee performance and increased efficiencies or deficiencies. And so it's been a great tool to identify what the needs are in the park, how the employees are performing in the field. So it's one of the things that I'm most proud of, and Jeremy and his team for putting some great effort into that in terms of efficiencies. And of course, our IGAs with school districts, you know, utilizing joint-use facilities to house our programs. We received quite a few supplementals this past year, and I'm going to highlight a few of them. From a position standpoint, we added a management assistant. This position is really... This position has really helped us with overall support for the department, managing our oversight of a ten million dollar budget, there's a lot of moving pieces to that, so this position has really helped with the oversight of that, as well as connecting directly to our residents through the Advisory Commissions. So we have active commissions, we have the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, as well as the Arts and Culture Commission. This position plays a critical role with those commissions. And then assisting us with overall alignment of our ops and strategic plans, and I'm sure if you asked Diana, she would list about twenty more things on there, but we're a little short for time. So I talked also about the other position that we added, the Right-Away Worker Three. This is, this was basically to add another inmate crew. And so they're out there, they're on the street, and they're making headway, and hopefully helping us get closer to that three times per year circulation in our Right-Aways and Most of the supplementals we received this past year were to perform park improvements, and this was combined. There's operational dollars here, supplementals, as well as CIP dollars here, and I wanted to highlight a few success stories. Based on the park audit system, we took a look at our parks that were in the most need. Wildflower South was one that was in need of repair, and we were able to, basically right now, there's a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars that is going towards Wildflower South, irrigation improvements, granite replacement, plant and tree replacement, decomposed granite, playground installation. The community two weeks ago just picked out amenities for their new playground, very, very exciting. A hundred and seventy-eight thousand. The success story here is that the funds that you have made available has impacted our park audit score that was a seventy-seven, it's now anticipated to be a ninety-four. And so it's important that you can see the progress or the impact that these resources have had on our parks and our residents. Another case study is for Wildflower North. This park was scoring a sixty-four on our audits, and so right now, there's a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars worth of improvements that's taking place, irrigation improvements, plant and tree replacements, decomposed granite, and this score will go up to a ninety-four also. So again, it's our park audits, identifying the need, matching that need with resources, and being able to increase these, the performance of our parks for our residents. We also received additional dollars, so we had various improvements take place over, we shared the love, Rio Paseo Park, Palm Valley, Falcon Park, Goodyear Community Park, Estrella Vista, items ranging from irrigation, trees and shrubs, to lighting, so additional improvements throughout the parks. Terms of challenges, the first one, the rising maintenance costs of the ballpark. Believe it or not, we just had our seventh spring training, and so as the facility continues to age, items that were on warranty are now off warranty, items that didn't need to be painted in the first several years now need to be painted, you know, as well as repairs to HVAC systems, some of the major systems, HVAC, plumbing, lighting, you know, it will continue, continue to rise. Some of our other challenges are, really stem around, stem around asset replacement, and this is in the parks. And so the older things are, the more time they take to maintain, the more resources they take. In turn, that impacts how much of our operation plan we can, we can get through at the end of the day. So asset replacements continues to be a big challenge. I will tell you that our staff has made great headway with this, and working with the Finance Department and Deputy City Manager, Bob, and...
What about Bob?
He woke you up.
What about?
But we are excited about the asset management, asset management and replacement program that will come before you in the coming weeks.
Good.
In terms of opportunities, you know, spring training, it was a record-breaking year for us, but we need to continue to grow that business, and we plan to do that. Opportunities for partnership, we talk about partnerships, partnerships, partnerships. Well, for us, it's really important to bring those to life. In a few weeks, we'll be opening up the pump track, which is a new amenity that is truly a community amenity at Foothills Park. Built by the residents, it will be maintained by the residents, and so it truly is a community effort through partnership. We talk about school districts and partnership with IGAs. And then additional opportunities, I know this has been a hot topic, but how do we employ the lean strategy into what we're doing? And so we're excited about that opportunity. And with that...
Questions?
Wonderful. Yes, Wally? I just want to say that we had a wonderful time at the ballpark, and I kept purchasing five, six, seven, eight, nine tickets so that I could be in the shade with all of my family and half of my neighborhood. But the staff did a tremendous job, and our ballpark was used every single day in March, and that is a lot of wear and tear on it, but it was kept clean, and the volunteers always had a smile on their face, and the positive response from visitors was just amazing, and I was very proud of the work that everybody did. And I want to thank you, Bruce, and all of your staff, because you really did a wonderful job on behalf of the city of Goodyear, and we thank you.
Thank you, and definitely, great kudos to staff. And it's important to note that it takes, it takes the city, all city departments to, for successful spring training. So I believe just about every department has their hand in some way of making sure that we're successful, but we appreciate that very much.
It's always a good feeling when out-of-state visitors compliment on our ballpark and how it's kept up, but I have to add the volunteers, I had more comments this year, and I think the ownership, both ownerships said the same thing to us when we talked to them at this state of the city with them this year. They're grateful to the kind of, you know, the way they've received in Goodyear and the way that the volunteers treat them. They talk about other volunteers at other parks, and they're not smiling, and they're not happy, and they're not always ready to help, and so we're very fortunate to have them there.
They are our backbone, without a doubt.
Absolutely.
And we have great, great folks.
Joe?
No, I just want to make sure I got it right, was ten thousand hours and a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, is that right?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to say thank you, actually, to all the departments. You know, quality of life is key for our city, and every one of you add to that. You do in every way. Some departments, Parks and Rec, that's where our citizens feel and touch quality of life, and you guys do an outstanding job, and I'm really proud of all of you. But, you know, thanks to our city. I know that each one of you do your best to make quality for Goodyear, and I appreciate that, all right? Bob? Good night.
Want to thank all of staff for the presentations this year? I thought they were very good.
Very good, very well organized, and able to, I think they were set up to the point
where actually we walk away from the table remembering things this time. It really was well done, and I found studying for this tonight was, wasn't it, was easy, and it was comprehensive, and it gave us just the information that we need to receive, so I really appreciate that. And it's a long day for staff, you know, be working all day long and preparing for these, and then be here most of the night, so thank you very much. All right, so I'm going to turn it over right now. Anything, Council, for the City Manager? Yes, Council, it's Bill.
Brian, can we get a recap of all these PBB numbers that everyone's been shooting out tonight? Total for each department, the number of ones, the number of twos, threes, fours, that everyone's been throwing them out there, and I tried keeping track, and then somebody did it in reverse order, and that threw it all off, so...
Absolutely, that's very easy for us to get, and we'll put that in, that'll go out in my manager's report this week to you, if not before. We had so much fun tonight, we're going to do it again tomorrow night, and I do think that we'll be able to have that information for Council by tomorrow night.
All right, so just remind you again, the City Manager said it, we're going to be back here tomorrow night, five o'clock, so I know we're going to be, having Ms. Joe has...
And I'll be out of state.
And Wally be out of state, so the rest of us all have to be here tomorrow night, okay? All right, meeting adjourned.